I call the March 6, 2023 School Board Meeting to order. It is now 6:25 PM. We're in Conference Room C of the Fisher Administration Building at 12121 West North Avenue. Ms. Summers, please call the board.
Ms. Mufeld, here. Ms. Fraley?
Here.
Mr. Myers?
Here.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Here.
Dr. Hoyt?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here.
Ms. Willis?
Here.
Great. Thank you all for being here tonight. We begin with public comment on non-agenda items this evening. Members of the Wauwatosa School Board value the input of students, parents, staff members, and community members. The Board's regularly scheduled meetings provide an opportunity for opinions and concerns to be expressed publicly. The Board values all comments and will respectfully consider this input in decision-making. The Board requests that individuals limit their comment on each item to three minutes. Following any comment, an individual Board member may respond on the issue raised. However, it is not the intent of public comment portion of the agenda for the Board to enter into a debate with a member or members of the community. Because non-agenda items are not publicly posted in advance, no action will be taken on public comment regarding non-agenda items this evening. We'll be giving public comment in the room this evening if there is any. And a reminder, if you have not been here in the past, you have three minutes. I'll give you about a 30-minute heads-up if anyone is speaking. And I would ask that you introduce yourself and show your address, please. Someone would like to begin?
Hi there. Jen Craft, 8818 Ravenswood Circle. Would just like to take a moment to thank publicly the Tosa East Booster Club, Athletic Booster Club, who put on a great event on Saturday night. Event planning is no joke, and the Board deserves to be commended. We had a very nice turnout. Dr. Jessup Anger and I coexisted in the room and enjoyed ourselves, and everybody seemed to get along. And I really appreciate, on behalf of the Touchdown Club, Lucky Joe's, Left's, BB's, Draft and Vessel, Onokind Grinds, North Avenue Grill, Drunken Cobra, City Tins, Ruby Tap, and for all their donations. But there are many others who helped the other 20 to 21 athletic clubs and teams. I want to invite everyone to Noodles and Company tomorrow night from 4 o'clock to 8 o'clock, where 25% of the proceeds will go to the Touchdown Club. That being said, I want to also give a shout-out to the thousands of great Tosa East, Westside and Eastside parents. We have thousands of great parents in Wauwataosa. Those parents who are sitting down right now helping their children with homework, who are at home watching this Board meeting, who attend their kids' conferences, who check their kids' grades online, who attend sporting events and theatrical and musical events. Those people aren't getting the notoriety in the public, unfortunately. The narrative is not reflecting the thousands of great Tosa East, Westside and Eastside parents who are very involved in their kids' education, very supportive of their students, and very supportive of other students in our community, who are champions of all students, regardless of zip code. I encourage people who feel that they are disaffected as adults in our community, in our school community, to reach out to the administration to work collaboratively and not be the center stage and try to be making yourself center stage when there are thousands of people approaching
30 seconds.
Tosa East and Tosa West and all elementaries and all middle schools in a positive manner. Please use the resources, parents, that you are given from our wonderful administration. Thank you.
Thank you. Quick comment on that item. Thank you for highlighting the great work done at Tosa East. There's been a lot of really great stuff. APSY, I think, had Saturday morning, Sunday, Saturday or Sunday morning fundraiser. Tosa West just did a great event for scholarships. So, big thank you to all the parents doing all the different things. Wednesday multicultural fair at Longfellow. So, some really good stuff coming up this week. We're kind of in that moment of traditions kicking off and doing a lot of stuff at the elementary schools, middle schools. So, if you haven't had a chance to get out and do stuff, there's a lot of new things happening, sometimes for the first time in a couple of years because of COVID. So, schools are wide open. Make sure that you get in and visit and engage. Great to see people out. Any other public comments this evening?
Hi, I'm Carmela Rios. I live in 1934 Forest Street. I have lived in Wauwatosa for over 20 years. I have been a teacher, a high school science teacher, for over 10 years. And I've been at Marquette, where I teach biology for 12-plus years. And I also had a short stint on the school board. I recognize some of you. I wrote a letter to the school board and to Dr. Means a few weeks ago. Dr. Hoag and Dr. Jessup Anger responded. And my letter was sharing my concerns with how fiscally conservative our district is. And this is something that has been taughted. It's something to be prideful of. And it's a culture in the district that's been around for as long as I've been part of Wauwataosa. But our teachers are leaving, and we're having a hard time recruiting teachers. And I was really happy to see in the February 13 meeting, there was data shown that there was a bar graph that showed the 25 CS1 school districts, and Wauwataosa was third to last in pay. And that should make everyone go up in arms, because that's unacceptable. And what makes it more unacceptable is that we have the financial means to change that, and we're not changing it fast enough. I know this kind of overlaps with one item that the Board is voting on tonight, but I don't even think that goes far enough. So, my comment is broader than that. I have also, this year, read the comments that Dr. Means brought to the attention that the middle schools are underperforming, right? Both of the middle schools are underperforming. While I have experienced that, I have three children. My middle child's in eighth grade. I got her standardized test scores this year. She's gone gone for two consecutive years. In addition, it's not surprising, because her ELA teachers, last year she had three different teachers in one year. And this year, three out of her four core classes in eighth grade have been taught by unqualified teachers for a chunk of the school year. And so, it's not surprising that the middle schools are underperforming. At the high school level, where my oldest is a junior, his best math teachers have left the district. His best math teachers have left the district. And the science department, where I have, you know, I hold special place for, could really use a lot of help. So, this is something we're seeing across
30 seconds.
I think the problems that the Board has been focusing on, which includes, you know, not problems, but the issues, human growth and development, the calendar changes, the curriculum reviews, none of it matters if we don't have qualified teachers in the classroom. A lot of attention has been placed on the fighting that has been going on, the discipline. That's connected to having high-quality professionals in the classroom. When you have 24-year-old teachers, they haven't gained the respect of the students. They don't feel the ownership of the classroom of
Dr. Rios, your turn.
They're not out in the hallways telling students what they're doing is wrong. So, this is an urgent problem, and it can't wait.
Thank you very much for coming. And thank you for that email. I really appreciate it.
Hi, my name is Kate Bertram, 11810 West Walnut Road. I'm a 37-year resident of Wauwataosa, a 1991 Tosa West graduate. My husband, a 1992 Tosa East graduate. Our daughters attend Tosa West and here at Montessori. We chose a Wauwataosa education for our girls. After all, the district had been top five for decades. Wauwataosa schools have always been a place where we have welcomed people of all different creeds, colors, and anything else they wanted to be. We cared about extremely bright education. We cared about our teachers, and we cared about our administration. Today, we find quite a different story, quite frankly, being ranked 42nd in the state. Instead of focusing on developing future leaders and great contributors in our school, we find ourselves struggling with accountability on standards of conduct. We give them chance after chance in the name of equity to simply comply. An equitable environment is one in which students are able to learn. They're able to excel regardless of their color, and they have the right environment to do so. Last week, my daughter texted me that she and her friends were held up in a boiler room. They had located a ladder because they were on lockdown, and if they heard gunshots, they were ready to climb for their safety on the roof of Tosa West. I was dying as a parent inside as I had to coax her through that it was going to be okay, not knowing whether it was. During the pandemic, you implemented policy after policy focused on keeping our children safe. Folks, I'm here to tell you the new pandemic in Wauwataosa schools is lack of accountability. It's more damaging than any other flu in the area. This time, our students can't protect themselves with masks and hand sanitizers. Instead, they hide in their classrooms with the lights out in fear for their lives. To Board members, this is about kids who are embarrassed about what you've allowed in their schools. As parents, we are done with your personal agendas on the backs of our children. Your partisan politics are sickening and self-promoting. Focus instead in keeping our children safe. Focus on standards of behavior and the results of lack of compliance. Our children are expecting that of you, and they're now demanding it. What will it take for you to hold students and parents accountable? Do teachers need to walk out on Wauwataosa schools? Do children need to refuse to go? Will it take another Leonard McDowell situation in which our principal paid the ultimate price? Instead of naming a field after Dave Brightlow, how about honoring, giving him his honor by dealing with the discipline issue now? You've never been given the right to systematically destroy Wauwataosa schools. Dr. Means, what will your legacy be? Will you stand with the children of color who are subject to the constant violence in Tosa schools? Those that watch you, see you as a mentor, and whose parents know Wauwataosa education is critical to their child's success? Or will your legacy be one that allows partisan politics to drive those children down a different path? It is critical that all children of color see you as a leader who supports diversity by holding people accountable and protecting and promoting themselves. I'm not done. Today, I'm asking you all to have the courage in this situation. Let our students, once again, take pride in Wauwataosa, instead of being known for the violence that it's now known for.
Any comments from the Board? I would comment that I believe that the violence is completely unacceptable. I don't think there's anyone in this room that disagrees with that. We need to work as a community to stop it.
Todd Keeler, 2453 North 97th Street. Some months ago, the Board went through the process of filling a vacancy. As you would expect, accepted nominations, held a forum, question and answer. Like I say, everything you would expect, one vacancy is to be filled. And yet, yesterday during the SOS Forum, Ms. Willis mentioned that the Board, in fact, approached her to fill the seat, and then she was, of course, subsequently assigned to that seat, especially considering the open records lawsuit against the district. I just kind of like to know how much of this that we see here is simply political theater and how much of the Board's business actually takes place via backroom dealings among select Board members? Thank you.
May I address that? Yesterday in the forum, I mentioned that I was a part of a parent equity committee at Jefferson, who pushed me towards applying for the vacancy. There was not a single Board member that was a part of that group, just to clarify. It was a parent group.
Ms. Beetham.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment thus far. The chair, though, does have the right to stop the microphone for anyone who isn't displaying proper decorum, including attacking Board members and members of our administration. So, please keep your comments to the subject at hand, and thank you for being here with us tonight.
Any final comments this evening?
I just have to move this count. Kania Long, 2622 North Menominee River Parkway. Did not intend to speak tonight, but I'd like to thank those who have the courage to do it. Last week was very disturbing for the parents of students at Wauwataosa West, as I emailed the Board and I had to play the back and forth with Dr. Means, which I really appreciate your transparency and your honesty, Dr. Means. My kids were homesick last Tuesday, and I called them in, and I thought to myself, is today going to be the day that I'm glad they stayed home? Sure as shooting, I was. As the only information that we got was, it was, should have been a secure versus a lockdown. That was what everyone was so concerned about. And the other parents that spoke before, we heard about kids under desks. We heard about kids in boiler rooms. Terrifying that we are living this all the time. And as I said in my email, nobody seems to care about the 99% of the kids who are there doing what they need to do and their mental health. Everyone preaches about mental health. Nobody cares that our kids are so used to the violence at this point. Their mental health is worth everything. There was not transparency about what happened. And for everyone in this room that saw the video of Dr. or Mr. Gollag getting a punch to the face, that's transparency. People need to show that. I want to thank Officer Ferris Griffin for what he did. This could have been a lot worse. It is just a matter of time. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie, is there anyone online?
No, there are no Haynes raised.
That will close public comment to start our meeting this evening. Thank you all. Dr. Jessup Anger? Yes, Dr. Means.
I would be remiss if I didn't make a statement to the Board and to the community. I want to be very clear. Under no circumstances does this administration condone the fighting, the physical altercations, the bullying, the harassment, and the chronic misbehavior that's happening in our schools. And regardless of color of the students or their zip code, and I think it was actually presented at our last School Board meeting on February 13th, and you can see candidly the racial breakdown. It is disproportionately kids of color. So, we're not preventing or we're not hesitating to implement discipline because of someone's skin tone or their zip code. We're disciplining students. We're going to continue to discipline students. It is not warranted, it is not tolerated in the school system. The fact that we have students on an unprecedented note, families and parents engaging in fighting is something I've never seen in my entire career. The fact that we've had three different instances this year where families, parents, have been involved in these altercations, that's not an issue of the district not addressing what we need to address. We have disciplined individuals. I've shared from a numerical standpoint, we've had more expulsion notices, and we've had more expulsion hearings in this district this year. And the people who have been involved in those expulsions have been people of color. And we're going to be candid that we have done our work, and we're going to continue to do the work. I think one of the community members said it best. We are invested in ensuring that our staff and our teachers and our students are safe. And it's not fair to our students that there's a handful of kids who are making terrible decisions and making our schools unsafe, psychologically unsafe or physically unsafe. But it is a misinterpretation of this Board and of our administrative team to presume that we don't want to discipline students and that we're not trying everything in our power to rid our schools of this behavior. It's unacceptable. If you need us to say that it's unacceptable, I have, and I'll continue to say it. Fighting is prohibited in our school system. Physical altercations are prohibited in our school system. Bullying and harassing is prohibited, and if you do it, we will discipline you, regardless of where you live and regardless of what your skin tone is. But this presumption that we don't want to do these things is simply wrong. It is inaccurate and is not a true characterization of who we are as a school system. So, I just want to make sure that the community knows that we're going to do everything in our authority to continue to keep our schools safe, and we're going to do it within. There's laws, there's procedures that we have to follow, but we are going to rid our schools of this problem. The last thing I would say is, and it's just not talk, I think later this evening, you're going to hear from the Policy Committee that there is a series of policies that will be coming before the Board in the next few weeks to talk about how the Board can govern around discipline from a policy perspective. We've shown at our February 13 Board meeting that there's data. It's not just us giving you lip service and sound bites. There's data that shows that we're bringing more expulsions before the Board, we're suspending more students, and there's, we're not looking at what color the students are, because if we were, the disproportionality wouldn't be the way that it is. So, what we would ask the community to keep in mind is that what you want, we want. There isn't a divide. And so, we are really, really happy and we're really enthusiastic that we will continue to work on this. I've talked to a lot of parents, I'll conclude on this now. I've talked to a lot of parents who will cite and share that they have had issues with discipline that range from years long before I arrived and long before many of you sitting around the table were on the Board. This has been a problem that has been festering in our school district for a while. Please give us the same patience that you allowed it to fester over the years to try to fix it. Thank you.
Any other more comment? Ms. Beetham.
Sorry. Thank you, Dr. Means. I appreciate the clarification, but I do want to say that your last comments, I thought, were not true. We have had some issues, and over time, there have been different issues coming before us from the children. So, this is a constant, having a safe and secure environment is a constant ask. It continues. There's other threats that come before us, but, you know, I just can't agree with your last couple of comments.
Which comments?
About an ongoing, many, many years. I just can't agree with that. But we do definitely have to manage all of the threats that come before us, whether they're external threats or internal threats.
Thank you so much for that opportunity to respond. We had a Policy Committee meeting just last week where we had two different families come before us and shared with us that they had concerns from the 2019-2020 school year. So, that's what I'm referencing, Ms. Mufeld, that there are families who are citing that there were problems with behavior and safety issues years ago. There are also individuals in our community who have cited that when you look at the disciplinary data and you look at the number of expulsion areas that have taken place over the years, that families are asking the question, there are students who have been disciplinary problems in our district for years, yet they continue to be in our schools, yet they continue, families have shared with me, parents have shared with me, these are the same children that, as they've matriculated through our system, have been problems at the elementary level and the middle school level. So, respectfully, what I would share with you is that the feedback I receive from the community is that there has been a long-term issue that has gone maybe not as prominent and as forefront as it is right now. And I think the feedback I've received from families and community members is that they feel that's the reason why they have to be so intense with their advocacy, because it hasn't been heard in the past. So, that's what I mean by my statement. And I see some head nodding in the crowd. So, that's the feedback that I've received by email or from being in the community and talking with people. There are families who are saying, this has been an issue for a while, but we feel that we have to be louder in our advocacy, so administration and the Board hears it. That's what I mean, and that's what I meant.
I want to be cognizant, Mr. Meyer, I'll give you a second. I want to be cognizant that we aren't agenda for this as a discussion point, but Mr. Meyer, and then we'll move to the consent agenda.
Thank you, President Jessup Anger. A lot's just been said, so my views are well-known. I will add to my views that since the day of Dr. Means' arrival, in my perception, he has been courageous in his efforts to bring an orderly learning environment to Wauwataosa. But on the day of his arrival, there were a lot of challenges here. And, you know, Ms. Mufeld, 18 years on the Board, me, 19 years on the Board. There was a period of time when expulsions, although the most terrible thing we do, but they sometimes have to be done. On an annual basis, there always were expulsions. And a time came where suddenly we didn't see expulsion hearings. And that was, that time came, it's like there's been phases or chapters here. And we dealt with things differently in the early years of my time on the Board. There was a time when the expulsion referrals became rare. And please know, Board members do not demand expulsions. We, at least speaking for me, expect expulsion referrals to come to the Board when administration believes it's appropriate, and then we decide on the merits in the room. No Board member has ever demanded, to my knowledge, an expulsion. We hear expulsion hearings on the merits in the room that night. And so, I just, just to provide hopefully some clarity here, my support for Dr. Means, but there was a lot, a lot going on when the day Dr. Means arrived. And I have seen him to be courageous in trying to straighten it out. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to move into our consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda which Board members would like to remove for separate discussion and action? Seeing none. Ms. Phillips?
Sure. It is recommended that the School Board approve the consent agenda, and I so move.
May I have a second? Second. Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Any more comment or questions on this item? Any community comment on this item?
Good evening. My name's David Keach. I'm a special education teacher at West High School and a member of the WVA compensation team. And I'm just here to express my support for the additional payments two professional educators are being voted on tonight. They're an important next step in our efforts to develop a fair and competitive compensation system for the Wauwataosa schools. They'll continue to help us move in the right direction. They're a strong indication of WEAs and district leadership's shared goals of retaining and attracting the best teachers for our students. And then related to providing the best staff for our students, I'd be negligent if I didn't also use the opportunity to voice my emphatic support for a wage increase for the district's educational assistance. Good ed assistants are truly indispensable in providing the supports our students need on a daily basis, and paying them competitively is the only way we'll be able to retain the amazing WEAs that we do have and to attract the additional ones that we desperately need. So, thanks for your time.
Thank you. Jamie, any comments online?
No, there are no Haynes raised.
Ms. Beetham?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes.
Dr. Hoyt?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
That item passes. Next up is strategic goals, six operations, action to approve the school resource officer memorandum of understanding with the Wauwataosa Police Department. And while you all think you're here for that, and you are, we also have something extra special, and I hope you're ready. Dr. Means?
This is a, this action item is long in the making, over a year long. I want to thank Sergeant Morrow from the Wauwataosa Police Department, obviously Chief McGillis, and I don't want to steal the chief's thunder. He's going to show the level of cooperation, partnership we have. He's going to highlight the staff members at the district level that have been integral in this process. But I just want a couple of things. We've always had a longstanding relationship with the Wauwataosa We've always had a longstanding relationship with the Wauwatosa Police Department, but we've never had a written memorandum of understanding. And the board upon my arrival said, please, please make sure that we, that we put something in writing to address our partnership. And this has been a process that I think has been very healthy. I think it's been very good. It's been, I think, illuminating and educational for all of us involved. I remember vividly going to our, our principals last year and, and asking, how, how valuable are the school resource officers to you? And they were in, and they're a very quiet, thoughtful, measured group. They were not thoughtful and measured in that, that meeting. I see Dr. Larson's here. They said, no, our school resource officers are, are integral to our school cultures and they're very important. We are, we're very proud of our partnership. We think we have, and I've been in a lot of other school districts, we have a good SRO program. It's just not that we have officers who are in our schools. We have individuals who are really good. And this starts with the chief, who's a proud Tulsa West grad, so it's personal for him. But then it goes down to the, the, the actual commanding officer for our school resource officers, who's a former school resource officer in our schools and understands all of our principals in all of our schools well. So I'm, I'm really excited that this is before you finally. We, we are ecstatic that it's before you, but I'm gonna yield the floor now to the chief.
Thank you, Dr. Means.
Do we have a motion?
We do. I thought Dr. Means was gonna do something else first, and he-
Okay. Do you want me to read the motion?
Through me.
We're, we're gonna do it at the end.
Okay. It's okay. I fumbled that one. Jessica, can you read this?
It is recommended that the-
That's how excited we are, sorry.
It is recommended that the school board approve the school resource officer memorandum of understanding with the Wauwatosa Police Department, and I so move.
Second. Thank you, Mr. Meyer.
Thank you, President Joseph Banger. It's been a long time coming, couple of years working on it. We've had some robust and rich discussions over it. And I think the real value, aside from the codification of our relationship, is the sharing of perspectives. Cops aren't educators. Conversely, educators aren't police officers. And in that robust and rich discussion, we had a lot of sharing of perspectives, sometimes some very energetic discussions. But it's culminated to this day where I proudly signed the document on Friday and I respectfully asked the board to consider approving it tonight as well. I also want to throw out a special gratitude to Mr. Pinion and Ms. Geisler from school administration. They worked hand in hand with Sergeant Morel, back and forth, working on language, working on that, the format that is in front of you today. So thank you, Luke, and thank you, Laura.
The reference of Luke and Laura is-
Not General Hospital.
I, I, I would just only add that the, for the board's consideration, this document has been vetted by both our legal counsel and the city attorney.
Yes.
So it, it has been legally vetted by both entities and is, I think is a ruley, is an exemplar of what an MOU should look like for a school system.
I didn't really look at it. Dr. Means is a living document. We're gonna continually revisit it. And if we have to tweak it and adjust it, we have a great dialogue and have a good relationship, and that's gonna continue on.
I know that there's two legislative bills in the legislature right now around school resource officers that legislators, state legislators are considering. All the different components in those bills are incorporated in this MOU where there's a request for the collection of data and, and trying to determine how often do school resource officers connect with, with students. That's all in this. The last thing I would just share before the board takes this from us is that we are utilizing our Fund 80 account, and so that's a community account. That means that our school resource officers, I just want to make sure to publicize this as well, that they are also working with our private and parochial schools in the community as well. This is truly a community effort and, and I think it makes our schools safer. So again, thank you for your consideration.
Any more comments or questions on this? I know we've had a lot of robust conversations. I'm not sure if we've got anything else, but anything that hasn't been said? Mr. Meyer?
First, I unfortunately have a duty to report to the community that in my perception, there was something done last week that was an attempt to influence my debate tonight. I ended that statement. I fully support this, Chief McGillis. Thank you. I, it's, it's, I'm almost, you know, brought to tears here and that one of your officers held at the door last week. And thank you. So I can't imagine what that's like. I've never myself been in a spot like that, having to stand in the breach of the door to protect the children and the staff behind me. So thank you, and I fully support this.
Ms. Newfeld?
Thank you. And I think my viewpoints are well-known as well, since I am one of the original board members that voted for the SRO program. And I'm very happy that we have officers and in the room with us. And thank you, Chief, for working with us. It's going to be a wonderful partnership, and there'll be a calibration meeting. We talked about that going forward. So some of the concerns that the community may have brought up, we can address those during a calibration meeting. Thank you for working with us and what a wonderful partnership we have.
Thank you. Chief, I just want to say thank you to you and Officer Morel and, and, you know, everyone involved in this process. You know, we had really thoughtful, yet difficult conversations about what it means to keep our kids safe. I just want to highlight that I've seen the three resource officers in action, and I appreciate the representation that they bring to our schools. You know, it is something that we have clearly prioritized in our strategic plan, and it's so great to see that, you know, that representation is reflected through these officers. It's, it's obvious seeing them in action that they care deeply about our children, just as we do here as board members. So I appreciate this work. I appreciate that it is a living document and that we can just continue to really, really strengthen this partnership that we have with the Wauwatosa Police Department. So thank you.
Thank you. General Hahn?
I just want to say thank you. I, I appreciate that you sort of recognized that this, this back and forth dialogue actually got us to, I think, a stronger document than the place where we started. So, you know, just recognizing that these are really complex and nuanced issues that we are trying to address, and, and there's no easy first answer. And sometimes there's discussion that has to come along with that, and sometimes there's hard discussion that comes with that. So I really appreciate that we're here. I'm really excited to see this, this sort of final working document and that we are going to be codifying our relationship, this longstanding relationship between our school district and the police department, and I'm really excited to support it.
So my big concern with this document is, of course, it doesn't include anything about Officer Tracy not being allowed to retire. I, I was joking before, Tracy was the graduation speaker at my older daughter's elementary graduation and then her middle school graduation. And so I'm trying to figure out what high school is gonna be like. But thank you all for, for this work, for the staff. I don't, I don't know who Luca Moore is. I'll have to ask at break or afterwards. I dated myself by saying that. But thank you all for the, for the work on this. And we can't, it's too late to add in something about Tracy. She's not, look at her, she's so chill. She's like, I'm retired and things are good. Thank you.
Are we ready to call the roll on this? Any public comment on this item?
Barb Chaney, 1324 North 74th Street. I've sat through a lot of these meetings and I watched the dialogue evolve, and I'm glad it evolved because I didn't like where it started. I think there's a lack of understanding that these officers will put their life on the line for our children. And we need to ponder that because we had a come to Jesus moment last week, and we need to understand that that's the true motivation. And we can read into a lot of other stuff and do micromanagement. I've heard during some campaigns that there is a delay because of home never or whatever. The real delay occurred because language needed to evolve, that the policy and procedure verbiage needed to be consistent with the agreement. And sometimes lasting good agreements require rebooting of some of the statements. I've done policy and procedure and task forces. I'm quite experienced at that. And that needed to evolve so that we have a good working document, a good understanding of who does what where, and also to respect the courage of our officers and their dedication. And I want to thank Officer Burback for her service. You guys have mattered into a lot of lives in this community. And also Sergeant Morel, people forget, he stopped a school shooting in 2018 in Tulsa East. We need to remember these things in our community and have that respect for our force, who are allies with our students, not adversaries. Thank you.
I appreciate all people that are here that stood up for Wauwatosa East, Wauwatosa West, and all the other schools. I am a student back in the 1980s, and it's been rough. The reason I came all the way is because I've been a graduate. We've got family members on 121st and Locust is where I was born and raised. My son graduated in 1999 from West. And I just basically am sorry for everybody having to go through things. We did have the things, just what you have, Dr. Back then, but not as bad. And it hurts to see what's happened to our schools. And I know that you can do the best for them, and that's why we came out to put up the strength and help you guys for anything that you need. Thank you.
Thank you. Jamie, anybody online tonight?
We have one, two hands raised now. BJ Ermans, please state your name and address. You have the microphone.
Thank you very much. My name is BJ Ermans. I'm at 2749 North 75th Street, and I am a member of the Wauwatosa Commission for Persons with Disabilities. I have also attended a number of the board meetings with all of the discussion points. And I want to especially thank Chief McGillis for taking a great deal of time to attend our last commission meeting to answer questions about working with children with disabilities and how they fit into this SRO. And his sincerity and his careful thinking and just demonstrated how much thought and caring has gone into this SRO, as well as all of the experience of the, the various officers involved. So Chief McGillis, thank you so much for taking time out to do that, and I appreciate the fact that this will be a, a working document and we can move forward in a great partnership. So thank you very much.
Okay, Heather Burke, you have the microphone. Please state your name and address.
Hi, Heather Burke, 217 North 89th Street. I also wanted to thank the chief for attending the Disability Commission a number of weeks back. During that meeting, he said something that caught my attention, and I'm paraphrasing here, chief, but it was basically that kids don't really have criminal mindsets. You know, there's a reason behind the behavior. And from what I know from most of the board in the district is that this is your common ground. And I know this process has been very challenging. Sometimes it feels like this might have been your only common ground. You know, I've been watching these meetings for a while, and I'm just gonna be honest, I can feel the tension and the hostility sometimes through the screen. I know this hasn't been easy. And if it was easy or, you know, an agreeable process, I don't think it would have taken quite this long. Dr. Means said something a few meetings ago, as he recalled watching the State of the Union address, and he noted the divisiveness of the country. And he basically said, again, I'm paraphrasing here, but the, the problem is with the adults in the world and the example that we set. Our kids are the measure of how we as adults are running the world they live in. They are like our canary in the mine, and they have been yelling for a while, long before COVID. And it's our jobs as adults to listen and adjust our own behavior to better support our kids. No one in that room is exempt from that responsibility. No one in this community is exempt from that responsibility either, and I include myself in that. I looked at the MOU. I noticed the collection and sharing of data. I love data. If we look at other data we already have, we can take a pretty good guess at what the new data will end up showing us. And when that data comes out, I, and I hope all of you sitting up there will say, wow, we need to change what we're doing so that we can better serve our kids. There are unfortunately people in this community who are not going to agree with that sentiment and do not always contribute to making this a welcoming place that we want it to be. And when that happens, I am asking all of you, board, district, SROs, the entire police department, to unite in not only addressing the issues, but in directly confronting any hate and divisiveness from this community in your words, your policies, your procedures, your trainings, and in your budgets. My other and hopefully easier ask is that when this data is presented, if we could include socioeconomic status and also try to find a way, I'm really sorry, Luke, for doing this to you again, reading levels are percent proficient at grade level. I know one of those is a much easier ask than the other, but we do know the connection between both of those pieces of data. We don't talk about it enough in this district, and I think we need to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burke.
There are no more hands raised.
Before we vote, a big thank you again for all the additional work, for getting decisions placed. I think that is my turn. Ms. Phillips, please call the roll.
Ms. Newfeld?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
I wish I could be there in person, but I'm a definite yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Joseph Banger?
Yes.
Dr. Hoig?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
And that item passes. Thank you. But before you go, we have one more subitem on this item.
I think the conversation about the MOU was a precursor to what we really believe is important. Officer Tracy Burback retired a few weeks ago from the Wauwatosa Police Department, and I've been in education for over thirty years and seen a lot of celebratory sendoffs. The sendoff that this community, specifically our students gave Officer Tracy during her last week was heartwarming and touching, and it demonstrates every, all the things that we heard the chief and Sergeant Morel talk about in terms of developing relationships, it was in full display during the past week, ranging from, and, and the principals were so proud to send videos of the experiences ranging from our elementary schools to our, to our, our secondary schools. It is just a testimony of what Tracy, Officer Tracy has meant to our community. I know Chief is sorry to see her go. We may be more sorry to see her go. And, and you need to know, Officer Tracy, you always have a home here. It's, you're not as opposing now without that vest. But you are a presence nonetheless, and we are, we were lucky to have you here. I want to ask Dr. Larson, because I know you work closely with her, to come on up for a second. Come on up, Dr. Larson. Yeah, I know you weren't expecting it, but those shoes, those shoes we have on have to be showing off. So we have a gift for you, Officer Tracy. Come on up. And it reads, "This award acknowledges Tracy Burback for your many years of service to education in the Wauwatosa School District. On behalf of the district and school board, we want to thank you for everything you did for every student and every teacher in this, this school district." Thank you. I told you you wanted to stay. And I think the only, the last thing I would just say is, Mr. Meyer stole, there was no other reason to say it, but I'll say it again. I, I was hoping to be, to honor brevity, but I can't. I know a lot of people who wanted to come and speak about the issue. I know a lot of people who wanted to come and speak about the issue and this incident that took place at Wauwatosi West last week. It would have been significantly worse without the bravery of our SROs. I, I hope everyone had a chance to see the video that the chief and I were able to, to shoot last week. And I shared with him during the recording of that video that if there's any, any example as to why this program and this, this partnership is important, is what happened at Wauwatosi West last week. It was, the words that I used was it was textbook in terms of what the SROs did. And I am so sorry that we have so many students who were going through a lot of fear during that, that time period. And anytime we hear the word lockdown in our society now, that is justified fear. But I hope that the parents and the students hear me clearly. You need to know that we had two of our three school resource officers on the scene and they were on top of it. And as Mr. Meyer, he couldn't have said, he said it better than I'm saying it right now. It was, it was a zipler. It was textbook. And we are indebted to the service that we know our SROs provide every day. So once again, chief, thank you, Sergeant, thank you. We're glad to have this solidified and codified in our relationship now.
Our next item is strategical number four, high quality staff. It's our human resources report. Thank you all. Have a wonderful night.
It's a hard act to follow. This month's Division of Human Resources monthly report includes, I think, what is thus far the most substantial work in the area of Objective 4.1 Staff Recruitment and our work to go ahead and build an educator pipeline. So I'd go ahead and just highlight a few, a few items that I shared on the report. I had the opportunity to attend a national summit on the educator shortage hosted by the American Association of School Personnel Administrators. It was attended by hundreds of not just school HR staff members, but departments of public instruction, institutions of higher education, licensing agencies. It was a great opportunity to see what so many other states are doing to address the educator shortage in their state and in their area. I have made a number of contacts, contacts that will certainly help us in Wisconsin and in Wauwatosi build our pipeline. And I look very much forward to sharing some of those updates with you. And some other significant work that's been happening this past month are the proposals that we were reviewing this evening related to educator compensation in Wauwatosi. And I'm looking forward to that discussion with you as well. I'm also pleased to share that our, our inaugural Health and Wellness Committee is meeting for its second meeting later this month, next week, actually. We're really looking forward to the support provided by that group of staff members to help us set some direction and set some priorities for our future benefits in the organization. Mr. Brightman and I have had the opportunity to expand our knowledge about some voluntary benefits that we provide to staff members. And now it's the important part of getting feedback so our staff members can let us know what is most important to them in terms of how we invest those funds. Probably what I am most excited about for this past month is that I started my building hours. And so you may recall that building hours was a strategy that we talked about early in the year in terms of engaging staff members and in making communication much simpler. So I'm spending one day on each of our schools this spring and have started doing so, and it's been fabulous. I had the most welcoming visit to Jefferson last week. It was, it was really incredible. And again, it's just a great opportunity to, to get out of my four walls and to see really why all of us do this work. And, and staff members have been very welcoming so far, which has been fantastic. I would be remiss if I did not mention that one of the challenges that we've experienced since our conversation at the February 13th meeting is staff members from other employee classifications besides support staff, besides teachers, expressing their interest and concern related to compensation. And so I want to acknowledge as well as state in our conversation that we absolutely do have, have plans and intentions of addressing compensation for all of our employee groups. We started with our largest employee group last year with our teacher group. Our next largest group is our support staff group. Are we okay, Tim? Okay. And we will continue to go ahead and in the, in the pattern that we have, sit down and talk with members of that, of that classification of employees, learn and hear what's important to them, and then chart a path forward. We'll be bringing to you then options or ideas for, for bringing greater parity and greater competitiveness with our compensation in the future.
Any more comments or questions in this report? Ms. Willis and then Dr. Hoig.
Can you tell me a little bit about what the building hours look like and what do you hope to gain from that? And are you gaining what you expected?
Yeah. So one of, one of the things that I hope building hours accomplishes is A, to make me a familiar face in all of our schools. So one of the things that is, is part of my day is taking breaks. So typically the schools host me in a conference room or another area where I can, you know, keep up with all my emails and the work that's going on. But then I'm able to take, you know, multiple times during the day to go and visit classrooms with students, introduce myself to educators and really to engage in that conversation. Again, I, I want to be seen as a helpful, familiar face in all of our schools. I'm also available for staff members if they want to pop in and talk with me. Last week when I was at Jefferson, I had a number of staff members come in and ask me questions related to retirement, questions related to compensation, come in and just introduce themselves to me, which was fabulous. And then, and then I'd say that the last area as well, it gives me a chance to go ahead and check in with the principal, the principals at the school to see, you know, what's going on. At this time of year, talking about staffing and planning for next year are pretty relevant topics. So really those three things are, are what's most important to me. I, I look forward to getting to the point where I'm so busy visiting with staff members and hearing about things that are important to them, that I'm not worried about getting work done that day because that's the important work to do.
Great. I just want to hear, especially as we talk about compensation, that, you know, our teachers really have voice in that process and that you're hearing back from them and, and taking, you know, what their concerns are and really stressing them. So thank you for putting yourself out there and meeting with our, our staff. Thank you.
Really just to thank you for continuing to be so creative and thoughtful about employee retention and recruitment. I can see how hard you're working and I just want to say thank you so much for that. And I'm really excited to talk more about compensation.
I'd like to say thank you. You are always so professional, prepared and organized. And there are things elsewhere on the agenda where you had direct responsibility and you handled them in such an impressive way. So I'm always glad to hear your reports. Thank you.
Ms. Zaleskowski, you have a tough job right now because the, the challenge right now, both in Wauwatosi and nationally, to both retain and attract educators. I'm working on having my now sophomore high school in the pipeline and will be here at some point. But I, I would love, as you continue to do this work and examine what needs to be done to bring those suggestions forward. I'm looking over your shoulder at Dr. Rios, literally right over your shoulder. And like her articulation and concern, I'm seeing up close with two close friends in positions in the two largest, largest schools of Ed in southeastern Wisconsin of how few educators we have in the pipeline. And so I, I would, I would say, I echo the sentiments of my colleagues. So thank you for the work. I'm glad that you're here and I know that you're going to need tools to do this work. And so don't hesitate to, to examine what those are and bring those ideas forward to the board.
My pleasure.
Thank you. Our next item is also under strategical for high quality staff. It's action to approve the proposed change to compensation system for support staff, administrative assistants, custodial maintenance, and educational assistant classifications. Ms. Muehlfeld?
Yes, thank you. It is recommended that the school board approve the proposed change to the compensation system for support staff. Includes administrative assistants, custodial and maintenance, and education assistant classifications and ISO mode.
May I have a second on this item?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Willis. We discussed this at length three weeks ago at our last meeting. Any additional comments or questions from the board? Mr. Meyer?
Just a comment. This item, and to speak ahead, I have the same comment for the other compensation items. We really need to do this. And the state budget is an unknown right now. So, you know, Ms. Rios, hearing what you're saying, we are very conservative financially. It has served us well. It's kept us out of debt, waits over the long haul is a very good thing. And I'm trying to figure out how to say this. If the state budget doesn't come through and other things happen that are on the negative end of our assumptions, we won't be in a happy place financially. In my past professional life, there was this concept called approval to proceed at risk. And to approve these, we are proceeding at risk. That does not mean it's irresponsible or reckless or, but it is. There is risk. And sometimes even in high performing, high powered organizations, the responsible thing to do is to proceed at risk. So I will support this tonight, proceeding at risk. Thank you.
Another item on the agenda a little bit later is Legislative Advocacy Committee. And that will be a really important one as we push for our legislators to source, resource some of the schools, some of that $7.2 billion currently in reserve. Any other board comments on this item? Any community comment on this item?
I can't resist since my name was brought up twice, so I'm criminal Rios again. I would say that I don't think it's going, I don't think it's risky to do this. I think that we are in a really good financial situation, but that does us no good if we don't have teachers in the classroom. And I just want to really express that that was my point. And districts are going to referendum to pay their teachers. There are ways that even if our financial situation changes, we will be okay. But we won't be okay if we can't fill the classrooms with qualified teachers. And these problems that you're seeing with the short, I mean, I'm seeing it at the university level. Students are not going into education. So this problem's only going to get worse. And we've put ourselves in this situation from years of being fiscally conservative. And people weren't sounding the alarms because there was a surplus of teachers. But now there isn't a surplus of teachers and it's all catching up with us. And this is urgent. What you're voting on today takes us a little, it takes us in the right direction, but more needs to be done immediately.
Two, two, four, six, eight, North 88th Street. My only comment about compensation is it just feels like, and I don't have the solid numbers, but it feels like lots of people have been hired for this building in the past two, three, four, five years. There's a new position or new, new titles for old positions and it's hard to keep track of as a public person. And there's not as many people in the buildings. I'm thrilled that we have as many mental health people coming in. And I know we have vacancies for some of those, but we need more people with the students in the classrooms or doing the work with the students, not here. They might be doing good work, but the emergent work is in the buildings with the kids. Thanks.
I do hope you all will stick around to hear about the work being done, the audit, and how this all fits together. It's, it's an important puzzle to understand the, the depth of it. It's complex stuff, so please do stick around for that conversation as well. It's a great point.
Hi, my name is Alicia Barts. I'm at 1421 North 69th Street. I'll second everything that Dr. Rio said. And I'll also add that we know a budget is a moral document. And it's a statement of our priorities and our values. So I'm really struggling to understand how the Wauwatosi teacher salaries have sunk to the third lowest of the CISA One school districts and how that is consistent with our community values. Because there's no doubt in my mind that this community treasures its teachers and its staff and understands the singular value of the people in our classrooms with our kids every single day. I believe this community clearly articulated its values, went past a $124 million referendum and invested in our schools. And we entrusted you to properly fund the people in those fancy new buildings. Retaining and attracting the best of class teachers and adequate aides in our district solves so many of the problems that you all have been discussing in this boardroom. Top notch teachers are our best bet for managing classrooms and behavior issues, for overcoming learning losses from the pandemic and meeting every student where they are. We cannot have an audacious vision for the future without the right staff to carry it out. We cannot keep calling ourselves a financially strong district if we don't invest in our greatest business asset, our staff, especially when we're on the brink of a serious teacher shortage. So I'm asking you to approve the compensation adjustments and the retention bonus payments before you tonight. And I'm asking you to keep directing the administration to keep bringing you more things that you can approve until our teacher pay scale is competitive with our neighbor districts and is a true articulation of our community's values. And I'm asking you to weigh the teacher pay gap against other financial proposals brought to you this year. Frankly, I really appreciated it when you all voted not to improve the Fisher Building Spaces last year. We're going to have to make some tough trade offs if we're going to urgently address the hole that we have with our staff salaries. And finally, I'm just going to leave you with a short story. My favorite teacher of all time passed away in January. Diane Dervler taught English at Brookfield Central High School for decades. She was a gem who left a permanent mark on students who passed through her rigorous writing and literature classes. And in response to her obituary, I read dozens and dozens of stories from Brookfield Central alumni who recounted how they chose their career path because of Mrs. Dervler. And I read dozens and dozens of stories from alumni who recounted her mannerisms, her catchphrases, how she made them feel, the notebooks they kept with her notes, and how they found her voice in their classroom. And here's the thing, Diane Dervler retired from Brookfield Central in the 90s. People were holding on to the classroom and life lessons that she taught them for 30 to 50 years. And that is the power of a great teacher. That is what our students deserve. We need to hold on to our Diane Dervlers and we need to recruit more Diane Dervlers. We just cannot afford not to. Thank you.
I just want to clarify something because it's been brought up a couple of times tonight. And I am very, very pro teacher compensation. Bring me a proposal. But I do want to be clear that the third lowest, can you keep that citing of we're the third lowest for teacher salaries in the CISA One, that was prior to last year's compensation raise that, that occurred. So I don't know where we're at exactly right now. I think that was something we would, we had kind of asked about a meeting ago. But just to be clear, that we are no longer at that place and we are definitely moving in the right direction.
Any online comments?
Yes, there is. Sarah Larrand, you have the microphone. Please state your name and address.
Hi, this is Sarah Larrand. I'm at 2445 North 91st Street. And yes, definitely agree with increasing the compensation. I did want to go back and just mention, publicly encourage everyone to look at the state budget and be advocates for our schools. I was a member, one of the founding members of SOS, who our main mission, going back when we started, was to advocate for better funding for our public schools. was to advocate for better funding for our public schools. That has always been SOS or support our school's mission to be advocates. And if that group that started led into the Legislative Advocacy Committee that we'll hear for, from a little later in this meeting. And I just, I think it's sometimes good to remind folks of, of history and that this is, has been a longstanding problem and something that we really, we all need to come together and fight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lorand.
We have a, we do have another hand raised. Julie Alexander, you have the microphone. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Julie Alexander, seventy two twenty four West State Street, Unit one A is in Apple, Wauatosa, Wisconsin. I'm, my comment is that I am supportive of providing more compensation for our teachers, especially aides in the special ed, special ed departments and in aides that deal with individuals with disabilities. Because I know that from what I've heard a lot, lot from others is that we don't really have enough of that type of support. So I'm really happy that we're going in the right direction. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Meyer.
Please, I need to apologize. I opened the door on this and people appropriately walked in after I opened the door. The motion before us is for support staff, administrative assistants, custodial and maintenance and educational assistant classifications. Now, there are two action items following having to do with teachers. The, the logic and the arguments, I believe, are the same over the motions, except this motion has to do with, I, I, to my thinking, there's a lot of consideration of equity concepts here that, you know, these are lower paid staff that, and the board is saying you matter as well. And then with respect to like the educational assistant classification, it had been a practice in the past to hire aides who were licensed teachers. And we thought that was valued because we had a licensed teacher in the room helping the official teacher, but we didn't have to pay as much. So that kind of thing is not equity. And this, this specific motion has to do with those people who typically are lower in the salary classifications. And I think it's significant that we're voting on them first as a statement of what we, in our appreciation of them. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, I think we'll call a roll.
Ms. Mifflin?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes, sorry, couldn't get off.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes.
Dr. Hoyk?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
The next item is action to approve the proposed twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three WEA compensation adjustments. Mr. Meyer?
It is recommended that the school board approve the proposed twenty two to twenty three WEA compensation adjustments and ISO move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Any more comment on this item?
Dr. Jessup Anger, we had a comment that came in during the day about why this was titled WEA and whether or not these compensation adjustments applied to all staff. Could you speak to that, Ms. Elzowski, so we can make sure the community understands the answer to that?
Sure. So WEA, Wauatosa Education Association is, is the group that represents teachers in the Wauatosa School District. That is the only official association representing Wauatosa School District teachers. A teacher does not need to be a member of the WEA in order to be afforded an increase based on either of these proposals this evening. It is however, I shouldn't say however, and it is the WEA that we meet with for meeting confirm meetings on a regular basis and who work with us on these proposals.
Thank you.
Any other board comment or questions, Mr. Meyer?
So just to be extraordinarily clear, a teacher who is not in the WEA will still have the same rights and privileges to these classifications as a WEA member. Is that correct? So we're not leaving out any teachers. Okay.
No teachers are left out.
Thank you. And then only to add that the community member who inquired has also received the answer.
Any community comment on this item? I just wanted to point out, having been in newer supervisory managerial roles, hopefully many of you already noticed, but while compensation is certainly a satisfier and significant satisfier, hopefully no one expects this to be a silver bullet to our, our employee retention issues going forward. Obviously recognition is important and other, other means of making sure that our, our teachers are happy in their roles as well as all the other staff. So just, just to keep that on top of mind, although I do also support what we're doing here with the compensation. So. Ms. Summers, please call the roll.
Ms. Mifflin?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes.
Dr. Hoyk?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
And that item passes. Next up is action to approve retention bonus payment to teachers and support staff. Dr. Hoyk?
It is recommended that the school board approve the retention bonus payment for teachers and support staff and ISO move.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Any more comment on this item? Any community comment on this item? I don't see any comment online. Ms. Summers, please call the roll.
Ms. Mifflin?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes.
Dr. Hoyk?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
And that item passes. Ms. Elzowski, thank you for your continued good work. And I look forward to, I think the sentiment of leave no stone unturned. And please let us know what tools and resources you need to bring the best teachers we can to Wauatosa schools.
Thank you. I look forward to doing so.
Or are we still doing okay? We've got a long presentation coming up. Do we want to take five minutes or do we want to keep moving? Okay. Five, strategic goal one, academic performance. Action to approve the proposed twenty three, twenty four school year calendars.
Mr. President, board members. Do you want to take your motion first? I'm sorry, I don't know why I've been doing it this evening. I'm so excited this evening. Yes.
Ms. Fraley, are you cool reading this one from afar?
Yes, I am. Just going back, looking back and forth. Sorry, y'all. It is recommended that the school board approve, now my cursor just moved, the proposed twenty three, twenty four for school year calendars and ISO move.
May I have a second on this item?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wells. Any board conversation or comments on this item?
Just a question for you, Dr. Means. I, I, on the high school calendar, I know that our ninth graders are starting at the beginning of the day and ten, eleven, twelve are starting midday.
They are.
Is that documented anywhere on the calendar? I'm just thinking if I were a parent and I'm looking at this calendar, how am I going to know what time my kid should come to school on the fifth?
That's a great question.
Cause the middle school one was clear, but I didn't see.
It's not identified as strongly as we should identify it. So we can definitely mark that September fifth is a half day for students ten, eleven, twelve and for freshmen it's all day. So we'll, we'll, we'll put that mark there. Oh, you're welcome. Good catch.
I know we had, we started a conversation last time about that fifteen minutes and what that kind of looked like for high school students. And just as parents plan, are the, is the district in a better place on what that fifteen minutes is going to look like?
No. Dr. Marble and the two high school principals are still having conversations.
I'll just give a brief update. We did survey and solicit feedback and input from our staff last week. And we are in the midst of collecting input and feedback from students and staff, or excuse me, students and families right now. And we'll be regrouping later on this week to review that information to inform next steps.
Is there an anticipated date? And you'll obviously get that information out to all the families so that they can plan accordingly.
Absolutely. The current deadline that I've given our building administrators is to have an answer before spring break.
Great.
I just want to emphasize again, this is not, we're not adding fifteen minutes because we want to. We're adding fifteen minutes because the Department of Public Instruction has identified a certain number of minutes that we're supposed to meet. And we have not been meeting those minutes.
And if I may add, some of the feedback that we've gotten already from families and students is some creative suggestions on how to adjust. One of the suggestions has been to remove advisory. And I just want to elevate the fact that that's already counted as instructional minutes. So that, just want to put that out there. And so does passing time. Shortening passing time is already counted in for the minutes.
You can shorten passing time by a lot and count that as by a. I will say my spouse and I both took the survey and we're not in agreement on how this should happen. So I know that you will get lots of feedback and you will do your best to figure out how to thread the needle on that. My comment on this is, I, I know we were not in a place with the, the short runway with the strong start, but I would love to see something come back. I thought there was a lot of really great ideas generated. Part of my role professionally is to prepare students for the transition into college, both mindset, skill development, wayfinding and so on. So I think, I would love to see something. I would also inquire if the district would be willing to consider like a two year rolling calendar. So that next year, when you bring a calendar, you bring two years of calendar forward. And so we're always kind of looking about two years out. I don't know if we can do that based on it, but if you can, I think that that would give faculty staff kind of a longer, typically two years, so that I can encounter. So if it is feasible, and I don't know all the things you're dealing with, but I would, I would welcome that if it, if it is. Any community comment on this item?
As someone who accidentally, regrettably scheduled a family vacation over exams this year, I would just like to encourage you to add the end of semester on exam schedule as early as possible so people can plan for that. Thank you.
That was also very brave to admit.
The only thing I would just add to this very rich conversation, to answer your question directly, yes, we can do a two year rolling calendars that I would just ask the community and the board to watch the space for the April primary election date. We are in a relationship with the city of Wauatosa. We utilize our community rooms for voting. And we anticipate that the, the primary election in April of twenty twenty four, which would be a presidential primary could be very busy. So we'll continue to have conversations with our colleagues at the city if they do intend to utilize our space. I think we're using four areas. We're using McKinley, we're using Wilson, Underwood and Lincoln, I believe, are the four. We're using those community rooms in those four schools. It is, from a safety perspective, from a, a school traffic perspective, it's sometimes better for us to not have school with children those days because if the volume is heavy, we may have to use the gym in addition to the community rooms. And so I would just say, watch the space. Mr. Brightman and I will be working with the city of Wauatosa staff to see if they want to continue. I think it's been a really good partnership. If they want to continue the partnership, we may come back to you later this spring, identifying a date where we don't have school for, at a minimum, the elementary school level. That's where the police.
Any community comment on, oh wait, we already said that. I think we're ready to call roll.
Ms. Mifflin?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Jessup Anger?
Yes.
Dr. Hoyk?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next up is mid-year review of student growth and achievement results. This is similar to a few other things. A presentation that was done as a video that was available to the community as well as to the board. And so the presentation is available on Board Docs. And then we are here for a Q and A. If the board has questions, I would ask that you limit those initially to five minutes. Certainly, I realize not everyone may have one. I believe Dr. Hoyk got a couple of questions that she sent in, but others have not responded for the staff to be able to prepare anything. But certainly if you've got something and then move on from that item.
Dr. Jessup Anger, board members, I just, I want to say that I I'm really excited that you're going to hear from this very strong academic leadership team and hear the schema that they want to present to you in regards to where we want to take our, our academic program. It's, it's a, from a philosophical standpoint, I think people will understand why we, we believe that this is the right plan, that, that the, the level of urgency that people continue to share with us, we feel it. But there's a lot of foundational work, in some cases foundational work that this team didn't expect to actually even engage in. It's really been critical work to, to ensure that, to use the Jim Collins language of the flywheel is actually in motion starting next school year. So, Dr. Marble, thank you for having your team here. There are other members of your team that's here as well that's not at the podium. And if you can introduce everyone, I would appreciate it.
Happily. So my name is Nicole Marble. I'm the chief academic officer. I am joined by Ms. Lindsay White. She is our director of data quality and analytics. I have Mrs. Jessica Ebert. She is our director of curriculum. I have Ms. Jenny Fatch. She is our director of continuous improvement. Ms. Leanne Nazy, our director of instruction. And then I also have two additional wonderful individuals behind me. I'm going to ask them to wave. We have Liza Weber. She is our elementary math curriculum coordinator. And then we also have Ms. Brenda Jones. She is our elementary English Language Arts Curriculum Coordinator. We do have other curriculum coordinators, coaches, specialists that are a part of, part of our team. This is the individuals that you have on board this evening. So thank you for the opportunity to have further discussion around our current academic state of our school district. I want to just take a moment to re-ground ourselves in the crux of the audit that was conducted right around this time last school year and what it laid bare for us as a school district. In a nutshell, we do not have an academic culture. And what this means is that our building principals have been viewed as building managers and not instructional leaders. As a result, we have not valued professional learning. We have not used data to drive decisions. And classroom instruction is not of the highest quality due to the lack of clarity in what it looks, feels and sounds like. Nor can it be guaranteed that skills and content being taught are aligned to standards. So in short, to be frank, our organization is broken academically. Unfavorable student outcomes should not be a shock to us. And where we are seeing favorable outcomes is likely due to luck of the circumstances rather than strategy. The district has not properly attended the development and utilization of clear systems to support teaching and learning. The recorded presentation and accompanying report outlines the call to action. Within the call to action are the tactical items that the district level administrators, principals and teachers need to do via the systems that are being developed. Research on district improvements highlights that there are three things that must be done to fundamentally improve the school district. These three things are develop culture, build capacity and create coherence. As it pertains to cultural, the culture development here in Wauatosa, we must develop an academic culture. As it pertains to cultural, the culture development here in Wauwatosa, we must develop an academic culture where principals are instructional leaders so that they can help our teachers succeed and ultimately our students. This further means that professional learning is valued and protected. Data is used to make informed instructional decisions and highly engaged instruction is what brings curriculum aligned to standards to life and is expected and afforded to all students each and every day in each and every classroom. Alongside building culture is the second improvement that must be made, development of capacity. The desired cultural behaviors don't happen overnight. We must work together to collectively build capacity to move towards our desired state. Adult behaviors will need to change and that change will be hard for some individuals in our organization, especially for those that have thrived in our organization of dysfunction. Finally, through our capacity and culture building, we develop organizational coherence. In other words, we develop a deep, shared understanding around the purpose of our work of educating children. Next year, we will continue to develop on our foundational expect, expectations that have been established this year that we're currently working on developing, such as principal learning walks and clear articulation of inquiry cycles for our educators. Two years to build the foundation is typical in the improvement process. And it is important that we go slow to go fast. Each day we are uncovering new issues that we were unaware of the day before. Addressing each of these issues in a thoughtful and systematic way is key to sustained change. Districts that have undergone fundamental improvement efforts have shown sustained improvements within five years. No one wants the change sooner than the five of us that are sitting before you tonight. And we continue to remind ourselves that change is a process and we must respect the process. We didn't end up in this current state overnight and we will not see ourselves out of it overnight either. However, we have a strategic plan and emerging systems that will allow us to get to a more desirable state in due time. So thank you for previewing our presentation prior to this meeting this evening and for the opportunity to, um, engage in further dialogue. So we look forward to your questions and your comments.
Mr. Meyer? Uh, you could also have the job of chief of quality insurance, quality assurance. That is the most straight-talking, truth-telling presentation I've ever heard. Thank you. And I, um, am very proud to be in the same room with you to hear somebody say what we have to do and that we're gonna do it. Thank you.
Thank you for calling on me. Um, I, I mean, I think what you have just done in that presentation, but also of course your pre-recorded presentation is you've demonstrated the reason why we need people in Fisher. Um, I think, you know, this is, that's a comment that we hear from time to time and I, and it's clear. We have not had a cohesive and strategic approach to academics across our district. And it's why we see inconsistencies and it's why we have these islands of excellence and other schools that are, are, are very underachieving. So I, I really appreciate you all being here and, and the work that you're doing. I have a whole bunch of questions and I know he will time me, so I'm gonna go really fast and I already sent these to you all. So hopefully we can kinda buzz through them. So.
I, I yield my time to you.
Well, thank you. I'll take it. So you mentioned that, you mentioned something about two years. One of my questions was how long until we can realistic, realistically expect to see some of these improvements in test scores? Um, and along with that, can you also talk about when we will even see our twenty twenty-two, twenty-three data? Cause I know the data we're looking at is from last year.
Absolutely. So some of the data that was on the presentation is actual real-time data from right now. Uh, our star reading data, our star growth, um, our star math data, our star growth data, um, the grades that were part of the presentation as well. I know in the presentation and the, uh, accompanying documents, it says that we will, uh, be coming back in, uh, June. We will actually be coming back in August, um, so that we have a more comprehensive, uh, here's our data and here's what we're doing moving forward. We won't have that in June. It'll be very reactionary in terms of just, here's the data. We won't have a thoughtful plan yet in place. So we'll come back in, um, August. As it pertains to some of the more, um, con, well, I almost say concrete, but, um, it is, it pertains to like the ACT and the forward, um, our state report cards, AP, advanced placement. That's going to be embargoed by the state until approximately October, November. So once that, the, once that data is available, we'll be able to bring that forward. We will get the data in the summer, but we won't be able to publicly release it until the state gives us permission in the fall. Um, and then we will come around this time again next year to provide a further update. And we'll just get in that cycle of coming forward.
And do you anticipate that when we hear from you next in August, or maybe it's gonna be next fall, do you anticipate that some of those scores will have gone up with what we've done this past year? Or do you feel like that cycle is just, it's too short?
It's, I will say it's probably too short. There is, um, there's a lot of research that supports that when you're putting new systems and structures in place, there's actually a dip in the results because teachers, principals are getting used to what the new systems and structures and procedures are. And so we have to allow, I, I think Dr. Means, last week at the strategic planning, um, committee meeting, you were talking about, we need to allow time and safe space for teachers to explore and try things in their classrooms before we can actually see improvements in action. So, um, it's a process. And about five years is typically when we look at districts that have gone through fundamental shifts in their improvement efforts that we see sustained change and improvements in about five years.
So one of the things that has come up, I think, a lot in community conversation is we need people in the buildings. We don't have the bodies to do all the instructional work that is being asked, which I think is a really valid point. So what do you say to teachers who tell us that the instructional coaches are great, they appreciate their knowledge, but what we need are those bodies to help actually teach our children?
Thank you for the question. I'm gonna actually have our director of instruction, Ms. Nazy, answer this.
It is not a surprise, right, that teachers are, um, expressing that they need more bodies in the classroom to provide instruction to students. As already mentioned, the instructional, um, infrastructure of our district is not well. And teachers have not been provided with the clarity that they need to most effectively meet the diverse needs of their students in their classroom. Instructional coaches serve as job embedded professional learning resources to assist building the capacity of our teachers. As shared earlier, the way to move the district forward is to build capacity for all. This is what instructional coaches are charged to do and instructional coaches are currently doing the foundational work. Putting more bodies in the classroom, we cannot intervention our way out of a universal tier-one instructional problem. And so given the adequate professional learning, the support through coaching and the critical instructional leadership of our principals, teachers will be more equipped with the tools, with the skills to meet the needs of their students in the classroom. So, um, principals, we've talked about before, are instructional leaders and haven't been previously allowed to do so, right? Or seen, or expected to do so, excuse me, serving more as managerial leaders. So to develop a culture of academics, a kind of culture of continuous improvement, which includes a culture for coaching, we need the, um, explicit partnership between principals, between coaches, right? To communicate the expectations and to frequently engage in opportunities where they're leaning into the learning with teachers and providing feedback around their instruction.
And how often are we, um, going to be surveying our teachers to ask them whether these are the right resources and if they've been allocated in the way that they need?
Could you please clarify? Are you talking about like the, the resource of coaches?
Um, yes, yes.
Please restate your question.
Um, so by resources, I guess it'd be, yes, educational assistance. That would be our coaching team, um, our interventionists. Just to, so we know from school to school, are you getting the right resources for your students?
So I can chime in here a little bit. I think in terms of something we haven't had in the past, we haven't had a seven-year curriculum cycle. So I think I have equated that to, oh, we're going to review science. Let's throw a dart at the board and see which content kinda sticks. Now we are really targeting a seven-year cycle of feedback around specific contents. And so our work within that are two phases, um, or seven, seven phases. It's with where we audit and we plan for development and then we implement and then we, um, continue to monitor. And that's across the seven years. And so within that monitoring phase, within that implementation phase, we continue to really, um, analyze both, um, personnel, materials, um, resources throughout that, um, cycle and process.
Um, just to add on, we've got a culture amp survey for our staff. And some of the questions that are on there are, I have access to learning and development to do my job well. I have access to things I need to do my job well. The information I have to do my job effectively is readily available. So those are questions that I think if our spring culture amp survey, to be able to reflect on as a team, to say, we're, have we been in the past and where are we now? And if we need to be, be more explicit with those questions moving forward to really monitor that. Um, so they can also bring back for our staff pull surveys, um, to continue to monitor kind of feedback from a big picture lens in addition to the more curricular basis of it.
I will also add on to that, um, when our educators do participate in professional learning, they are surveyed. Um, so we can get feedback on how valuable it was. We then do, um, as we engage in learning walks with our building principals, coaches, coordinators, we're able to look across the system to see for transference of the learning. Um, so when I meet with the building principals that I have for, um, thought partners, I'm asking about what is the professional learning that you're doing at the building level? And then what, how is that manifesting in the classroom? So being able to look at that, uh, across the system. Um, I will also say that to the point of, do we have the appropriate resources? Uh, a number of our principals are starting to engage in what we call, um, rounding or check-ins. So it comes from the medical field where you are rounding around a patient, right? Dr. Hoyt, you understand that. Uh, but for those that don't. Um, and so that practice asks a couple of key questions. What's going well? What resources do you need to better do your job? Uh, what, what's not going well and who do you wanna celebrate? And so by having, by engaging in that practice of rounding, that keeps a more, a, a quicker pulse on what teachers are bringing to the level of concern to their building principal to be able to say, I, you know, it would be great if I had X. And then the building principals, the conduit to either, um, provide that resource or work with us to say, what else can be done? Because this is not, um, currently happening in our classrooms and we would like to see what we can do about that. I will, um, I will just say, we don't have enough resources to do the work that we want to do. And that we need to do.
How much time do I have left? Um, I wanna talk a little bit about our students who are affected by the COVID pandemic, which is all of our students. But there were certainly a subset of those students who are, we know were more affected. As we think about that cohort of kids, you know, I'm thinking about like, I think they're essentially our, our third graders and now they're gonna matriculate into fourth grade and so on. Um, but that cohort of kids lost probably at least a half a year of education, perhaps more. What are your thoughts about how we need to sort of strategize how to meet their needs? And do we need to allocate resources differently to that cohort as they're kind of aging up?
Yeah, I'll let Ms. Fatch, uh, respond to that. Thank you. Really the intervention, it needs to work alongside our universal instruction. So when Mrs. Daisy said we can't intervention our way out, um, she's absolutely correct. But we do need to be appropriately staffed to provide students who need that extra support to be able to close a skill gap and attend to the current universal instruction. We are not currently resourced, uh, K-12 truly to meet the intervention needs that we have. Um, just to give you a small example, um, if we looked at the number of elementary students who are below the twenty-fifth percentile on the star universal screener, there are three hundred and fifty students. I have six elementary academic specialists that work on my team. That is, uh, like a fifty-five, fifty-eight to one ratio. That's not tenable. And that's not even addressing any ELA if they, we were just to address math needs. So we don't have those resources to work in tandem. Um, are the academic specialists that we have had been intentional this year about meeting with our teachers. I had the pleasure of sitting in with the team at Underwood, who met with the teachers of the students receiving math and ELA interventions to talk about those transference of skills and what teachers could do in the classroom to reinforce that instruction. So it's truly a double or triple dose, uh, of academics.
Can we talk about like low-performing students? Cause I've heard, I, I know there was an example, I think, in the presentation of, um, kids in McKinley getting a specific intervention and kind, kind of raising up that group of kids. I've also been having conversations with, with parents and teachers at Underwood and, um, and they're saying, you know, like, they have whole classrooms of kids who are really underachieving or behind. And, and to feeling like they're getting some of the same resources that other, that, that McKinley is getting, um, when their students are clearly struggling at a different level. Um, can you talk about how we or you all define low-performing student? And is it the same universally across from school to school? Do we define it differently? Is our cutoff the same for intervention or do we have different cutoffs by different schools?
Ideally, we would like to be able to start with a group of students below the twenty-fifth percentile on a universal screener as a starting point for discussion. Due to the lack of resources in terms of specialists, we've had to look at students below the tenth percentile. I'm not pleased to have to say that tonight. That's, that's been our starting point. When we talk about the allocation of resources, there are six FTE allocated for the elementary academic specialists to serve ten elementary schools. Underwood has two point O of those FTE, so one-third of the academic specialists available in our school district have been assigned to Underwood Elementary School. McKinley has half an FTE.
So you're allocating?
I'm allocating based on.
We're really short-staffed. We're really short-staffed.
Inadequately staffed. Because I think the key to, I'm sorry, the key that Ms. Fatch shared is that we're using any student below the tenth percentile.
It should be below the twenty-fifth.
Most schools, I mean, we always wanna compare ourselves to school districts around us. They're using the twenty-fifth percentile to identify students in need. So we're, we're not capturing all the, the students who teachers are saying are behind, um, academically in the classroom. Because we, we're so inadequately staffed, we're, we're using the tenth percentile, not the twenty-fifth.
And is that because of our employees, all, you know, kinda coming back to our conversation with Ms. Delazowski? Is that about our employee hiring or we, are we having open positions that aren't being filled? Or do we need to allocate our money in a different way, our budget in a different way to get more people in? You're all nodding. We need more.
I started, we need money for people. I added one and just, we added an FTE in December.
I would just like to add though, that, so from an intervention aside, but also when we go back to the conversation around tier-one universal instruction, right? When we see that dis, that large number, we really have to look at what we're doing at a universal level and question, are our resources supporting and moving the needle? Do we have enough coaches to support educators in that universal approach where we're scaffolding and removing barriers and providing access to all on the front end so that we're not having to play catch-up so much? And that goes back to, coaches are invaluable. They, they, that is the work of, of coaches. So I just wanna reiterate that point.
And I will also just add, you know, there's, uh, the conversation of there's so many people at Fisher. We, we are also, the work that we're tasked with is to make it very crystal clear what teachers should be teaching so they don't have to have the guesswork and make up what they should be teaching. And that's part of the reason why we are seeing such a disparity in our data and variance across this, across our schools is because we have basically had our teachers be independent contractors. They're, they're making up their own curriculum. They're deciding what is effective instruction. And we need people in these seats to be able to say, here it is, go forth and execute.
This might be a really silly question. Um, do teachers want to have that ability to be creative? Or do they want, or is that just so much, so labor-intensive, they want us to give them a curriculum? Are we taking away their autonomy or are we helping them?
That's a beautiful question. So here, and I, I would be remiss if I don't call attention to the. So here, and I, I would be remiss if I don't call attention to the curriculum coordinators who do an amazing job of kind of setting what we say is the science of teaching. So there's the art and science of teaching. What we're trying to identify is here are the standards that must be taught. Here are the most important skills that students in third grade must receive in order to feel successful moving forward and marching forward in the progression of their learning. And so we're setting the stage as a curriculum team on the what? What needs to be taught and identifying that and providing curricular resources? You know, we need to make sure that teachers have access to high quality instructional resources and high quality instructional design in order to achieve those standards. But we still want teachers to have a space of autonomy in that art and be able to bring forward. But if we're really clear on the end goal, really clear on what we're marching towards, then we have more space for that autonomy. So I think that's a beautiful question.
I have just one more and it's not on my list, but I'm going to just throw it out there. And you don't maybe have an answer yet. So we have six, did I hear you say we have six interventionists at the elementary level? And when I said, do you need more people? You all nodded emphatically. Give me a number. What do you need?
Before you answer, how many, before, how many, how many of those specialists are paid through ESTER funds right now?
All but one.
So now you can answer. And I, and I, it's really important for us to point out, because I think there's this misinterpretation in the community that we've used our ESTER funds for administration at the district level. And that's not true. It's just flat out not true. We've hired the mental health specialists. So those are people boots on the ground, working with students in the buildings. While we talk a lot about the fights, there are a lot of mental health specialists in our secondary schools who have prevented fights because kids are going to those people. We've hired our behavioral specialists at the elementary level. We talk a lot about the fighting and dysregulation at the secondary schools. It has calmed down when I compare last year to this year to the elementary school level. I think in large part due to our elementary behavioral specialists. And then yes, our, our academic specialists. All of those positions were, were hired through, through our ESTER funds. And again, I just, I want to point out that the business office, I think Mr. Brightman did a great job coming into the district. Last year we had, um, other leadership in the district office that we were able to balance our budget in order for us to not use our ESTER funds to close a budget shortfall, but to actually hire people who are in the building supporting, uh, teachers and schools. But in a year, we'll have to make some tough budgetary decisions. So I guess that, that was me giving you some time to think about a response as well.
We did as a department, um, put for our key leverage items in the budget for next year, an increase of FTE. And, um, I think we were rather audacious in somewhere between eight to 10 FTE. And that was not including what we would like for instructional coaches. Cause while I'm advocating for the team on which I work, that advocacy extends to the instructional coaches. They are indispensable.
So this is where the connection of what, when you hear the legislative advocacy committee speak later this evening, the work that they're doing, the work that Mr. Brightman and I are involved in. This is not technically an issue that can be solved at this board table. It's going to require legislative advocacy. School districts all across the state are in a position where we're, we don't have the, we don't have the resources to truly meet the true needs of, of our students.
So may I ask a financial question in supporting what you're asking, Dr. Blake? So after we know what is going to happen with the state budget, is it correct to say we ought to be able to project out a number of years, maybe three, maybe, you know? Will we have the money for what we need? So that we can look at the truth about where it is. It, the board for years has had the luxury of just being able to vote yes, and it just all works out. But if we want these things, and why I defer time to Dr. Hoig is she knows what questions to ask. Well, she pointed out some things that we need. So from the finance perspective, we have to support what you're identifying as needs and let the board know whether the money is going to be there ahead of time. So we can go to the community if we need to, to say, two years out, this is coming. We started, like we did with the building reference. Took, took a couple of years and the community was convinced that we had a good plan. Okay, thanks.
Oh, I, this is a great statement. I would just, as an adendum, I would just add, a year ago, we had, I thought, a very comprehensive audit done on our academic program and it stated that things were not well. This past fall, this team came before you and said, here's our action plan to that audit, our response to that audit. And they've been working, um, I can't express my gratitude. I need to do it publicly. They have been, they've gone above and beyond in regards to what I expect and want in response to that audit. That where I feel a level of sympathy for them, not empathy, but sympathy for them is that every week when I meet with them, they're coming back and sharing with me, this is what we've discovered now. These are the, here are the additional problems we have found. Here are the things that have gone unadressed or unattended to for years. That's what, that's what they're, they're facing. Um, and so yes, your questions are really, um, timely. I, I think the fact that you have pointed, we know that our, our academic intervention plan is not ideal. Uh, we're trying to function within the resources that we've been provided. And, and again, I'm so proud of the fact that we were able to leverage our ESTER funds to even do this. If we weren't in a position, if we weren't fiscally prudent enough to even use our ESTER funds this way, we wouldn't have, we wouldn't have any. Uh, you're going to hear from Ms. Fatch last, the next week, the number, the number of staff members we have assigned to provide gifted and talented services in this district is, is unbelievable to me. I, I think it was, it's down to a point five.
It was a point five.
It was a point five. We used our ESTER dollars. Again, here's where we use ESTER dollars. And so this, this narrative of we are using ESTER dollars for administration is not true. If it wasn't, if it wasn't for our ESTER dollar fund, funding, we would, we would only have a point five. A point five FTE dedicated to gifted and talented in a school district with 7,000 students. I don't know. That's unbelievable to me that that's where we, that's the starting point we were in. And so again, I just, I want to say thank you. Um, and again, I, I can't stretch it anymore in terms of how much FTE you're supposed to respond to, Dr. Hoig.
Eight to 10, eight to 10.
They gave you the answer.
I'd like to 10, would you?
I'm going to go to Ms. Freely and then we'll come to Ms. Foch. Ms. Freely?
Um, so first, thank you. I agree with, um, Mr. Meyer. I appreciate this being laid out so blatantly. And I also want to acknowledge, I know that this is really hard for people to hear. But Dr. Means has done exactly what this board asked of him when he, he came here, which was to please come, get underneath, you know, what's going on? And help us to identify, you know, what, what is leading to the outcomes? Because we've been trying lots of different things and I'm sure you would hear teachers say like, enough already. And, and the biggest thing that Dr. Means has lifted up to the board, regardless if it's finance, if it's academics, if it's discipline, it's been a lack of systems and structures that have kept us from creating a consistent experience. So whether we're talking about the kid who's in the, the lowest 10%, um, which is where my kid was in reading in, in first grade, um, or it's in the top, you know, point five percent in terms of gifted and talented. Um, so thank you for laying out so clearly how much work we have to do. I really believe that we can't make great strides until we can name a problem. Um, at the same time, um, I also want to ensure that our community does not hear this data and, and I don't want to say run scared, but feel like there's no hope. I feel like the foundation that's being laid is, is really good. But a couple of things that I'd love for you to think about, and I'm not asking for answers actually tonight. But, um, you've talked about how, you know, depending on who you talk to in the district, people have had amazing experiences with some teachers and less so with other teachers. And we're trying to get to this place of consistency. I would love to know how we are capitalizing on some of the great things we are seeing out there and trying to replicate them, um, more quickly in the, in the short term. Cause I absolutely hear you on the two year thing. But if I'm a parent whose child's in first grade and they're not reading where they need to be yet, they're saying two years is too long. So how can some of the systems like STAR and whatnot, um, help kids, uh, in the short term? The second thing is I really appreciated Jen Craft in the beginning of the meeting, calling out the thousands of amazing dedicated parents in our community. And I would go beyond parents to say, community members. There are school districts around the country that in response to the pandemic, started doing what is referred to as high dose tutoring. Um, and I do wonder if there is not potential to put something in place that would alleviate some of the strain on teachers. I know in, uh, Milwaukee Public Schools, I think it's called, um, shoot, Forward Scholars. Is there something that we could put in place that would allow, not asking parents or community members to serve as teachers, but to like serve as listening ears to kids reading? Uh, cause the more kids read, the, the better they get to be at reading, right? So what are things that we could partner with our community on? Um, so that parents feel, community members feel like they are partnering in this challenge that we have ahead of us. Um, and then I'll leave the rest to the Legislative Advocacy Committee, uh, update. But I would just say, it would be really helpful to have from you all the types of things you would spend that money on. So that when people are advocating to the legislature, they're able to, to advocate for specific things that are hard to say no to. Because again, we are not the only districts experiencing these things. I guarantee you, there are other districts all around us that are just maybe not being as comfortable and as confident saying these really hard truths. So, um, if you can also get really specific with us, share with, um, Mr. Brightman or Dr. Means, like what would be those asks, what would be those dollar amounts? That would be really helpful.
Thank you. I had a rather, um, fun cabinet meeting where I elevated my financial requests.
We know what the requests are. They're substantial. I, I, I would just add that, Ms. Freely, that, um, after spring break, in conjunction with our RIC department, um, there will be a pilot at Underwood where seniors will be asked to volunteer, what, I shouldn't call it volunteer. We will compensate them, um, for coming in and reading to students. And we're starting at Underwood because of obvious academic needs. So, um, that's a pilot that we're starting. It'll be after spring break. Mr. Vander Kamp has really been a really good lead, um, and has worked with our seniors, uh, to, to get that up and going.
Ms. Wells?
I just have a couple of comments and then one question. But you know, you talked about this, you know, putting these systems in place which haven't been there. Kind of disrupt what's going on right now. And, you know, some teachers aren't going to come along on that journey, but some will. And some will want those supports, um, and those resources. So I just want to make sure, I mean, you kind of touched on it, but that we're really getting feedback from teachers about what their needs are. I mean, especially if they've been functioning in a dysfunctional system for so long, they might not even know right now what their needs are. But as they go along this journey over these next few years, that we're really intentional and thoughtful about checking in with our teachers through surveys, but also through conversations and having relationships with their principals. So we're really understanding what our teachers need to be successful. And then I just want to echo what Ms. Freely said. You know, I participated in the Forward Scholars Program and I appreciate that we're piloting something at Underwood, but we have such a really smart, thoughtful, engaged community. So really capturing, um, you know, those folks who want to be involved in helping with our academic success. So, you know, starting here, but opening it up because, you know, it takes a village. It really, truly does. And then finally, my question, um, it really just kind of, it's around, how are we applying rigor to our advanced learners? Right? We talked a lot about our, our learners with academic deficits, but how are we applying enough rigor to make sure that our, our, you know, our higher achieving learners aren't just remaining stagnant?
Thank you for bringing that question forward. I'll let anybody else on the team jump in at any time. The, the narrative has really started, we've shifted the narrative in our buildings, especially through, um, one of the systems that we've developed, our student support teams. And rather than having those meetings solely focused on the students in need of academic support and intervention, we've also elevated the conversation of here is, here is a student who is already performing at X percentile. What are you doing in the classroom? What can we help you provide for that student in the classroom so that they can continue to grow? My philosophy and the philosophy of this team has been every student, no matter where they're starting the school year, deserves to grow one academic year. So whether they're starting way, uh, way up here or down here, everybody deserves to grow one academic year. And that has been, um, the work that we have started to shift the narrative around, um, in our conversations. Ms., I don't know, Ms. Fatch, if you have anything else you want to share?
That is, uh, another part of the work on my team is to think about our advanced learners. Um, we had the gifted and talented audit that we presented back in the fall. I'll be back next week with a team to talk about where we're going in response to that audit. I would be remiss if I didn't, uh, bring to the board's attention that our academic specialists also should be helping out and able to work on tier three intensive intervention for students who need that advanced option. Because we are limited in the scope of our work that hasn't been tended to the way we would like to. So, um, the design of that position is to be able to work with learners and help student support teams and teachers figure out how can we best serve students on all ends of the learner spectrum? So more to come next week, but that is also going to be the charge of the academic specialists. Our coaches have also been instrumental in developing tier one options for our students as well, who need that extension enrichment.
If I can just add, um, I think also through instructional look fours and principals engaging in micro slicing and conversations with thought partners, the learning walks, we're really, uh, looking at instruction with a greater salience around rigor for all students. And so really thinking about the universal design for learning, right? All students deserve rigor in the classroom. So really taking a close look at instruction. And then also the work of Jessica and her team in curriculum. And I can let her speak towards that, but the standards, right? Drive the level of rigor. So with greater attention to the standards and the work of the curriculum team, that's also going to elevate the level of instruction and clarity around assessment outcomes for students.
Yeah, we identified in the presentation, another system, um, it's PACE. And that's what, um, is what we're really using early release Wednesday or any common planning time for is, um, the two coordinators in the back here have been instrumental in leading that learning and then bringing coaches along to then extend that learning into other spaces. And within each step of that cycle, there are specific questions we want educators to be thinking about when it comes to, you know, what do we first, what do we want students to know and be able to do as a result of, um, this unit? What does student exemplars look like? Like, what are we aiming for? Cause even just defining kind of the rigorous expectation and having conversations and calibrating around that so that we are all going off and kind of looking for the same things is a critical step. And as they plan for overt instruction, as they think about, how am I going to respond to students and have formative checks when they don't understand something? And what am I going to do when they do understand something? So how am I going to extend? So each step of that PACE cycle and that system has been something, um, that Brenda and Liza have brought to five of our elementary schools and have provided training around. And coaches have attended that as, um, as well. And now we're bringing that to all. So we hope across K-8, all ELA and math classrooms, um, will have that learning. Furthermore, the two coordinators, um, in the back are also meeting with elementary, um, principals in a series, um, what we're calling a Zoom principal series, where they're really, um, helping our administrators look at their data and understand their data and what kinds of questions can they be asking about their data? So, um, again, people at Fisher really being the, the eyes of the work and helping lead our principals to be really thoughtful instructional leaders and then help our educators move through those systems and structures.
And on that note, you know, I just want to thank your whole team. I understand as an educator, the work that this takes to disrupt these systems and put these effective systems in place and. and put these effective systems in place and really be thoughtful about allocating resources and meet the needs of all of our students. So thank you for all the work that you do. It's certainly just my full notice.
So I I appreciate everything that's been put together. It seems like we just have a new team and we have a lot of new educators. And because of that volatile volatility, if you will, there's less, and we don't have systems in place to apparently to go back and create this process and structure. I guess what I'm trying to trying to ask is, if I'm a student in the classroom, why am I having a terrible experience?
May I? Because prior to this year, we didn't have a Ms. Weber and a Ms. Jones. So without having a Ms. Weber and Ms. Jones, and I think this is why they're very important. And while I adore working with these five in front of you, the work they do every day is critical. Because without Ms. Jones and Ms. Weber, it depended on which classroom you were in and what school you went to. That that was going to decide if your teacher was going to teach the standards or not teach the standards. And so if you had a teacher who understood the standard, let's take little Eric in fourth grade at Roosevelt. If Eric at Roosevelt had a teacher who understood math and and reading language arts standards, he had a great experience. If Daman, who went to Madison, didn't have a teacher who understood the standards in math and and reading, my experience was totally different than Eric's. And we went to the same, we went to the same school system. That's why their presence is so important. The 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 vision and the framework that they provide is critical. Leanne is so important to what we do because it's through her vision that we have an instructional framework. You heard her use the word micro slicing. Micro slicing is the opportunity for an instructional coach and a principal to go into a classroom for 15 minutes. And we have identified what a lesson should look like. We could enter, we should be able to enter a classroom with 10 minutes left in the lesson or in the first five minutes of the lesson and identify what the lesson should look like. Prior to Leanne arriving in our district, we didn't have an instructional framework that said, this is what instruction should look like. That's the work that these individuals are bringing. Without Ms. Fatch, we talked about the 10, the kids who are at the 10 percentile, the 10th percentile in terms of academic success or lack thereof. If she wasn't leading the conversation around continuous improvement and how we support those students throughout their academic journey, there wouldn't be anything there. Ms. Eber. Ms. Eber has provided us a foundation where now we're looking at all of our curriculums, all of our curriculums across the the different spectrums, ranging from math, ELA, next week you're going to hear from her around technical education. We didn't have anyone who was attending to our curriculum in the past. What would happen is someone would come to the district office and say, I think it's time for us to look at ELA curriculum. There was no system in place. And so having someone who's attending to that is fantastic. And then finally, Ms. White. There's been a lot of requests around data. There's been a lot of requests around data. I think last week I actually provided some data to the board that gave us the ability to look at what is the, what is the performance of Underwood with USTEM students and without USTEM students? A year ago, there was no way we could have given you that that level of detail with data. Ms. White and her team have been able to give us that analysis. We talk about the Wednesdays and we've heard a lot of, I've heard a lot of feedback from community members about the Wednesdays. If we don't have a data infrastructure that allows teachers to see how their students are matriculating and moving, either moving well or not moving well throughout the school year through our data analysis, then those Wednesdays are just, they're just time. And but she has made them so rich because now we're able to give the the teachers data that's really, really important and and right in, right in, right in time. That's what they just described to you. And that's a lot of work. And that's what we we shouldered all this on Dr. Marvel to to orchestrate and to conduct. And that's a lot. There's a lot of stuff that's moving at the same time. I think someone mentioned earlier, if we have outstanding instruction, and that is what I gave you of little Eric at Roosevelt versus Daman at Madison, if we can take the pressure off of our teachers so they don't have to be curriculum directors or they don't have to remind their principals that we have to renew our curriculum, they can, they can do the the science and the art of teaching in a much more liberating, free way. The way we've been doing business right now is that it's actually harder to be a teacher in this district. It's not, it's not easy. We believe that these people are making it much easier for for our staff. That's why, I I hope that answers your question a little bit.
So we've lost resources. We have new resources. And we're now rebuilding all these systems. And and maybe the people, are you saying maybe the people are not in the right places? So we need to give extra support to some of our educators?
Yeah, so I think there's an assumption that our teachers come to us inherently qualified to do the work that's in front of them. And they may have a a teaching certificate that says from some governing body that they are licensed to teach. Not all of our teachers come with the same tools in their toolbox. It's our responsibility to identify what tools are currently not being employed or are not in the toolbox and teach them. So that's the whole idea of the capacity building. So we've, we have not done that systematically. We have not provided our principals with the resources and the learning and the expertise that they need to be able to go into the classrooms that they have direct access to on a daily basis and say, teacher A, I've been in your classroom and I'm not seeing you engage in what we call conferring during the, when we're listening to students read and giving students feedback on their reading. I'm not, this was, I'm not seeing this. So I need to then lean in, either have the coach work with that particular teacher or it's a, I'm seeing this across the board in the whole entire school. And so we need to have school-wide professional learning around this. We have not had that level of examination because we haven't had the people. So we have more people now so that we can attend to the, to the proverbial garden. We had a garden, we planted seeds, it grew, and we weren't able, we didn't have people to weed the garden or water the garden appropriately.
I like that analogy. So let's talk about curriculum. Let's talk about curriculum. So, okay, it's one thing to have rigor in your curriculum. It's another thing to motivate the students. So how are we going to do that? And I'm looking for the students to talk about this maybe a little bit too, if they would like. But is our, you know, what's different? What encourages students to be motivated?
College. I mean, honestly, want to, job, want to go to college. I, when I was little, I was a little rebellious. And now I feel that I'm fairly motivated in school. And I pay attention and try, but there are a lot, like, in middle school especially, there was at least a quarter of class went into care. And then as a guy more into APs, that really fell away. But I mean, I think the general consensus was, what's the point? You know, like, I'm stuck in a pretty stinky and smelly and hot school all day. Why? And I mean, as like a young kid with a lot of energy, I also had that question. Now I obviously see the point. You needed to be a fresh human being.
I'd like to add on to that, that Delancey is right. At least in my experience, as I got older, I started to take more AP classes. So the motivation was really more there as you go higher up in like academic, I guess, level. I don't know the right way to say it. Because in some of the like general core classes, like regular English nine, regular chemistry, the motivation just isn't there. And I, like, I watched teachers kind of go through or like have to deal with students who just don't care and who don't care if they're failing a class or if they have to take summer school to retake it. And I think that college is a good motivation for many people, but it's, it's not always like a realization that people can always go to college. Like, the idea of college was introduced to me when I was 12. But then other people maybe in the school, it's maybe just not a plausible option because of financial reasons. So I just, I don't know. I feel like teachers might be a good motivation, but we need our leaving, so I don't know.
Just add on to what our brilliant students shared. Every student is different. So there will be some students who are motivated for college admission. There are some who are looking for interest into the workplace right away. There are some students who are compliant and will do whatever the teacher asks. I'm a former middle school principal. I don't assume that students are going to be compliant. I'm assuming that we're going to need to create instructional environments that will pull something out of the students that are special. So what that engagement level, I think it's a two-way street. It's just not simply the students. It's also what they are receiving from an instructional standpoint.
I will add on to that and just say, it's about relevancy. And our, our teachers, they're, they're plagued with having to figure out what, not only what to teach, but then also how to teach. And part of the work of our team is to help, help them just focus on how to teach and providing with the tools so that they can do that successfully. So they can be better attuned to their, to their students. What is it that their students need? What, how might I be able to pull this particular student in and helping them develop that classroom environment? We, we haven't provided our teachers with that opportunity to do that.
Thank you. I really do appreciate the conversation this evening. I I just see some reoccurring themes over time. And I really want to get to, what does the student need? How can we motivate that student to see themselves in a different place? No matter what that place is in the future and how they can excel in with their abilities. So, you know, I'm really looking forward to seeing how, you know, this will be implemented. But again, I mean, I'm seeing some of the same themes recurring, like, how do we use the Wednesday time better, how at each level? How come we see this data or that data? Are teachers too much teaching on the fly and not using standards? I mean, I see a lot of these recurring themes. So the difference to me is focusing on the students. And everything we do is around the student and how motivated they are.
I have a motivational, okay. One of you said that we've never had a curriculum review cycle. And I stepped back and it made me think. And, and you said this is a five-year project. And I've been here for 20 years. And gee, well, 20 years, well, four or five year chapters. So Chapters one and Chapter two, we had a review cycle. It wasn't so formal, but we did review regularly. Chapter three, we had a very formal review cycle. Chapter four, we lost our way. And now at hand, your team is, you at this table, you all, you all at this table, a new team at the dawn of Chapter five. And I won't be around, but this is, in a light, a rare, a rare opportunity to have a team formed, a challenge, a chapter that's yours to write. So I'm confident in what you will all do for the next five years.
Can I just say, I appreciate, that was me who said that. I appreciate that comment. So I should clarify upon my arrival. There was not. So I appreciate that.
I wasn't, it made the old guy think when you said that. Because for, for your field of vision, it has been never. Because the Chapter four, we lost our way, and that's what you know. Some people have kept me around for a while because I remember some things. And it's like, well, this is not the end of the world. It's not a good place, but it's just like the cycle of an NFL team or a professional sport. There are cycles. There are chapters. And you are at the beginning of a, of a chapter. You're not coming in in the middle or at the end. This is your chapter to write. And and you sound like you're going to write a good story for us.
But you're going to join us. This evening, the Policy Committee will be presenting for the first reading 2100, which is educational philosophy. A lot of the, a lot of the issues that you've heard us talk about today will be in a brand new policy for you to act on. And so from a governance standpoint, the board will have the authority to ensure and govern us to make sure that this work is happening. So it's not, you don't have to have institutional history anymore. It'll be in policy. There are other policies that this fine team have put together to say how, I, I think of Leanne and her, her, her statement of, we should be receiving this type of update every other, you know, twice a year. There will be policies that will come before you soon that will institutionalize that this work happens. I would just, to start landing this, this presentation, I would bring us back to the, the imagery of a garden. And what we need from the board is when we are tending to the garden, that we just don't grow roses in the garden. I think at times when school districts lose their way, instead of having a potpourri of different flowers and vegetables and different things to grow, and you see a lot of people in front of you who do very specific, important things, you can't, as a board, don't, don't lose your focus and get drawn off by the shiny thing. And and administratively, we're committing to you, we will not bring a shiny thing to you. We're going to bring to you a systemic schema. We're going to bring a, a framework where all of these different things are happening. I think school districts that I've studied in the past that when they lose their ways because they've, they've gone all in on one type of curriculum or some new program or some shiny thing. When you, when you chase the shiny things as an institution, and it's any institution. I'm looking at Mr. Phillips here. Doesn't matter if you're in finance or you're, you're in any business, when the business loses focus, that's when it becomes a problem. And so from a, from a, from an organizational standpoint, we're going to stay committed to not getting locked in, in that garden and just growing one type of vegetation. But we're going to make sure that we're comprehensive and we're, we're bringing the work to you.
The negative of being more present is I have to wait to the end. And this is the, the singular topic that I, in my career, in my life, of why I ran for the board is the most important to me. I'm reflecting a lot back to board decision in April of 2021 of us sitting down and saying, we, we need somebody who is going to drive academic achievement, who is going to close achievement gaps. And we are seeing now the foundation laid, Dr. Means, that you and the staff and all of you are doing. I'm going to challenge you a little bit and say, I may want it to be faster than you do, maybe that's fast. I want us to be further along. I know we can't rush it, and I understand that go slow to go fast. I am, I'm continuously reminded of how do we be excellent across all the schools? That we have some schools right now that are literally the top elementary school of a non-megat school in the state of Wisconsin. That we have many, many schools that are significantly exceeding many schools that are exceeding expectations, and that is despite not having the systems in place. And so I'm thinking a lot about the, the most powerful statement that I think you said in the report is, it was, it was, to paraphrase, that teachers are exhausted. And how do we provide them the framework, the structure and the support to take that exhaustion off their shoulders? How do we also let them know that that's what we're doing? How do we also let them know that that's what we're doing? Um, and that they have all the tools and resources they need, support from parents, uh, support from the board. Uh, certainly, there's the, the pay piece that we are addressing and we need to continue to address. And Ms. Ellis asked, seriously, whatever you need, um, look, print it back. Um, but there's also more boots on the, boots on the ground of what do we need in these, these? Go ahead. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm only one vote, so.
Very helpful.
Um, the, so I'm thinking about the incredible experiences my kids have had. Uh, and they have had rigor. Um, they have been pushed, but it hasn't been consistent. It hasn't been every year. Uh, I think parents can probably point to years where you're like, oh, my kid didn't really grow much this year. And other years where they took off. Um, I have been worried about our middle schools for a really long time. Um, and I know we've got people who are working hard at it. I keep thinking about your earlier point around the incredible importance of academic leadership of the principal. Um, the video that came out from the district, uh, Your Principal is Your Hero. Uh, I encourage everyone to read, and really underlines the importance of the, the hires that we have at East and at McKinley coming up.
Madison.
And Madison, Madison and Montessori. Thank you, Dr. Means. Um, and so how do we really hit it out? How do we make sure that we've got folks? And I, I know you're all doing this, but, uh, that we have folks who want to take this on. I have been telling people, um, maybe brazenly, that I believe that we're going to be a top-five school district in the state of Wisconsin and a place that people come to visit to understand how does a place like Tosa do this excellent work? And how do they model what they're doing after us? I wish we were five years long on that path, but we are where we are. Um, we asked you all to take a look under the hood, to be brutally honest with us, um, to take a look at everything that we could do and to examine it. And I hope that this is a place and you could look back on your career and say, we did something really special here and to celebrate that. And I'm really excited about seeing what the data tells us. And it's not going to tell us what we want to see as fast as we want to see it, but I'm hopeful. Um, so we'll hold you accountable, the community will hold us accountable, and we'll keep pushing at this. So thank you for your dedication, your work, uh, and your professionalism and being honest. And, um, Mr. Meyer, I think you started out the thing well of like, that was a brutally honest assessment. Uh, and it is what Jim Collins would say that those in education so rarely ever do. So thank you for doing it. Thank you for doing the work. Thank you for shining a light in all the places it needed to be shined, um, and for doing all the heavy lifting. Thank you all.
Thank you all first.
We are now going on to a variety of board governance topics. The first is Legislative Advocacy Committee update.
Public comments on that, it's on our agenda.
The public comment, just on the action item.
Oh, okay.
It's a little bit difficult to figure out. Reports don't.
Our student reps have to go for homework and other things, so, okay.
Thanks for being here, Daisy.
Daisy, don't forget to follow up on the internship opportunity. Okay.
Oh, okay. Oh, yes, thank you.
Ms. Mufold and.
Good night.
Ms. Fraley.
Ms. Fraley, are you there?
I am. Do you want to ki- kick us off?
I was going to ask you if you wanted to, but, um, but I'm, I, yeah, I'll, uh, I'll just briefly, uh, talk about our last meeting. We, um, we were not able to meet as a committee today, uh, but I think we will have a meeting on next Monday. And, uh, in our February meeting, well, it, it, uh, was quite a, quite a lot of information was presented. Leanne can kind of frame a little bit about the, the ask for the funding for schools, special ed, mental health needs, and of course, the teacher pipeline. But it really all hinges on the CPI-based funding for schools. Um, we're doing some things for advocacy, um, to really help our community members be better advocates for Wauwautosa. We're also creating video clips. We're updating the webpage, and we're in the process of contacting legislators. Uh, and then the board will be invited to go to a day at the Capitol on March twenty-second. Will be a key, um, point of interacting with legislators. And I am planning to attend, I believe, along with Dr. Means and Mr. Breitman. So that's just kind of a, what did we talk about in February? There's more to come and more to be rolled out. Leanne?
Yeah, no, that was a great, uh, highlight reel. I, I think the, the two things that I would just reiterate is that, one, Mr. Breitman, Dr. Means and Ms. Ellis, uh, our Director of Communications, are doing really a fantastic job of putting together materials that we will use to communicate with the public and students and, and families and whatnot. Um, and what I think makes our work really exciting is that, uh, the attempt to make it really accessible because the funding formula and funding for schools is so complex. Um, they're basing their communication strategy around the old, uh, and I'll date myself here, uh, the Schoolhouse Rock approach to, uh, to school funding. And the, the theme is going to be it's elementary, where we provide a, a visual graphic, and then we present the problem, and then we present our recommended solution. Um, what's been happening over the last several weeks is that districts across the area, um, through SWSA have been putting forward their legislative advocacy priorities like we did, uh, when everybody signed on back in, I guess it was early February, maybe late January. Um, and so you're seeing, uh, an increase in the number of districts that are advocating very clearly, uh, for increases in per pupil allocations, et cetera. Um, our meeting on the twentieth, or maybe it was our weekend on the sixth, the, the, the governor's budget is out, recommended budget and ours, while the, the dollars don't line up line by line. They do for the most part overall, uh, line up in terms of what we think would make Tosa positioned to be successful, um, in meeting our needs moving forward. Um, but several board members spoke tonight about looking forward beyond a year or two years. And so one of the things, um, we're trying to consider is what would make, what would Tosa need to really be the district we aspire to be, to be a lighthouse district? Um, and so this goes beyond just one legislative advocacy cycle. Um, and so we, uh, can expect to see, uh, those communication materials and whatnot at our next meeting, and, um, we'll be excited to share them out with you all. Um, as Ms. Mufold said, if you are available on March twenty-second and would be willing or able to go to the Capitol, that would be fantastic. We will be looking to, uh, bring legislators to our schools in April and then really get things ramped up in April and May. Um, one of the things, uh, Ms. Mufold and I are working on though is a transition plan because we will both be stepping down. And so we're going to need to position incoming, uh, folks or current board members who will not be running, uh, for election again, uh, to take over our role in this work. Though I know I've said publicly, I plan to stay engaged as a community member. So, um, open to any questions you all have?
Mr. Meyer. Uh, as a practical matter, do you have us any speculation on when we will have budget finality? I know there's always like the posted and the scheduled and.
What we hear is late June.
Late when? I'm sorry.
Late June is what we're hearing, but again, you know, it, that's, you know, a guesstimate.
Right, because you've got your ear to the ground, so you probably know better than anybody, you know? Okay, thanks.
And there is motivation to get this done on time. Where in prior years, you know, that's always been in question.
Well, it is what it is, just try to, because I, I see Finance Committee work on the horizon here. Once we know what the numbers are, as we've talked about earlier tonight. If that is to be done by the Finance Committee, that I don't know.
I see no other more counter questions. Thank you both very much. Uh, can you share again that date so we have it, uh, of the Legislative Advocacy at the Capitol?
It's March twenty-second.
Yep, March twenty-second. And then we should talk about the DPI funding presentation, which is going to be this week, actually.
Reschedule tomorrow?
Yeah, Wednesday evening from six to eight P M. at Underwood.
Thank you both very much for this work. Uh, it's a critical time right now. Appreciate your leadership on this topic issue. Um, next up, we're going to go to the Finance and Resource Committee update.
That's me, nice, nice, okay. Um, well, we met at, um, five-thirty on, um, January. Oh, I'm sorry, on February twentieth. Um, our next meeting will be March twentieth. Uh, in the, in the discussion, we reviewed the, um, the Governor's School-related State Biennial Budget. We looked at the key revenue and expenditure inputs. Looked at the second Friday pupil count, which is largely the same as the fall count, which is good. Um, the, reviewed the January twenty, twenty-three financial report. And all of these are needing to be done. Um, typically, like the, the Governor's, um, Biennial Budget, we're all well aware of a lot of those things. The, um, the second, third and the fourth items here are our standard items. Uh, then there was the, finally, the discussion of the, of the, uh, smooth startup of the new cleaning contractor. So it was, um, a good meeting. Um, uh, Mr. Phillips, to his credit, um, takes, is, is liberal and is taking a public comment that we haven't needed to time anything. Uh, it just is a very pleasant, productive, very rewarding kind of meeting. It really has been. It's been nice. And so I, uh, recommend the meeting for anyone to see how this, you know, what the business side of it, where does the money come from? What are the money worries? Um, especially our students. I think if any student would be able to attend to get to know the, the, the language, the terminology and the, what the documents look like. It's, it's kind of a rare chance to look into what your future might be someday. Uh, and I anticipate if the work is, um, assigned to the Finance Committee, there will be some real work coming up about scoping out budget priorities and allocations and things like that. But we aren't, we are, that is not happening yet because there's not the timing yet to do it. But whoever is staff to the new Finance Committee, thank goodness for Mr. Breitman. Um, it will have some real stuff to do. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions on the policy committee? Yes, sure.
Um, thank you for that update. I have a question of where something is placed. And I thought this topic might go to finance and build, in buildings. Is it like business services, is it finance? But anyway, what I'm going to ask is parking across entrances to schools and the different kinds of options we might have from a safety perspective? And I don't know where this topic goes, if it fits, if it fits.
Well, it was, uh, it's actually the government's that, not, not us, it's out of our purview.
Well, it would be a, but it would be a school district ask if we wanted to, if we wanted to standardize this sort of.
Should we want to change a city regulation?
No, just, no, no, just how we would, you know, how, how we would look at possibly changing, not so, I guess what I'm about to say is not all schools have the same parking across from their main office buildings. And do we need to look at that? Because we've looked at a lot of other safety areas, and I just don't know where to, where to bring this. So I didn't, because it would have to be, it would have to be an ask by the school district, I think, in this case.
That to me seems less governance-focused and more operational. So I would think Laura, Laura, and that would fall into her bucket of work to do.
Yeah, so I didn't know if it was be under safety or for it be under buildings and grounds, business services. So that's, I mean, someone can get back to me later. I just, this was a report tonight, so I thought it would ask.
Now, if you were building a parking lot.
If it was on our buildings and grounds, then it would call safety.
Right, there are all these questions when we, when.
City streets.
Right, when the parking lot at West was done and, you know, the easement and the, you know, for the power lines or whatever. That would, the actual building, once the decision was made, is that, am I going the right direction here? That would be the Finance Buildings Committee.
We own that.
Yeah, safety assessment about how much parking is needed, that's different.
Okay. I would recommend reaching out to Dr. Means.
Okay.
Superintendent of Wauwautosa School District. And he will, uh, get that question to the appropriate person.
Thank you. I just didn't know, you know, because it, I think it can overlap between building and grounds and safety and, and, um, you know, pickup, drop-off, safe schools, um, the walk-to-schools initiative, you know, so I think it all, safe routes to schools. Thank you. I was, I had to, you know, so I just wanted to, I wasn't sure. Thank you.
Seeing no other comments, we're going to move on to the Policy Committee. This is just your update, and then we will move into the first readings and action items for secondary.
It is, thank you. Um, so much like the conversation today about some of the systems in place, um, I just want to point out that, you know, since this Policy Committee was formed this past fall, we've really been tasked with doing a lot. I mean, we, our garden hasn't been ten to two in a number of years. Um, ten to fifteen in some situations. So, you know, it's, it's in dire need looking at, at these policies because not only are they outdated, but some of them are out of legal compliance. And fortunately, we're working with Neola and, and Dr. Zemben, who is just brilliant and has such a depth of experience with, with getting us on the right track. With that being said, we have heard the call from our community to address discipline and, and what we can do as a Policy Committee and as a governing board. Um, really, through policy, that's our way to use our governance authority to provide direction to administration on discipline. I mean, that is our role. People keep asking, what is the board doing? Well, we're doing it through policy. Um, Dr. Huygen and I, we've, we've met twice a month since being appointed to this Policy Committee, and it's been hours and hours and hours. And we have poured into not only developing policy, but really looking at policy through our lens. Uh, we got some great feedback from Dr. Zebin today that just the thoughtfulness and the intentionality that we've put into these policies to make sure that we're addressing the needs of our community is like, unlike anything he's ever seen working with the district. So, you know, I, I'm, I'm proud of that work. Um, with that being said, Dr. Huygen and I decided that we would like to ask the board to have a special meeting. Um, we've kind of been all over the place looking at policy because we have policy that the administrators have brought to us that, you know, needed to be addressed right away, while also doing the work of, of these discipline policies as well as the bylaws. So what we'd like to ask you tonight is, um, to agree to a special meeting. We have seven policies specifically that we would like to bring, um, before you during that meeting. Um, it is our student code of classroom conduct, student hazing, student anti-harassment, bullying, student discipline, suspension and expulsion, and alternative expulsion hearing procedure. Now, a few of these have already come before the board. They've been approved for first and second reading. But much like, it sounds like the, um, Finance Committee, we've had some really great conversations with community members that have come in and really given us their input on, on what do we need to do to address discipline? And how can we weave it through all of these policies? So we're not highlighting it in one area like the student discipline, but that we have this alignment through all of these policies that really affect and outline what are our expectations around student behavior and discipline. Um, with that being said, um, we are going to introduce one of those policies tonight for a first reading. But again, we'd like to come, um, as a full board in a special meeting to really talk about these policies and, and how it fits into our governance role and how we give direction to our administrative staff on how to address these issues.
I will just say yes, please.
Yes, well, can I ask, so, very comfortable with this ask. Are, are you talking ninety minutes, two hours? Like, what is your?
I would guess ninety, nine minutes, two hours.
We're talking a bunch. Uh, so I have another meeting I'm planning on having this summer's schedule for us, uh, coming out of our last meeting to talk about board goals. Uh, coming out of our last meeting to talk about four goals. So I think I would be happy to combine both of these and have, uh, have a single meeting sometime later in March. So we, March is normally a one-meeting month and maybe a three-meeting month. So I'll have her reach out this week, uh, next, probably forty-eight hours or so. And find out what calendars are like and schedule something on set.
And Dr. Boy, did you have anything to add to kind of our, our thought process around this? And, and how important it is, you know, right now to get this out to our community, to show them that we are doing this work and we are committed to addressing.
Um, I mean, you, you highlighted, I think, very well. I mean, it is, again, these are some of the policies that we've seen before, but we're sort of doing this piecemeal approach. We really wanted to put it together as a packet of seven policies that are all interconnected. So that, like, as a board, we can see how are all of these things tied together? How are we using them all? I know each of us had brought up different concerns. Mr. Miles, Mr. Myers brought up, you know, how are we addressing victims? So those are all things that we're trying to find an opportunity to weave together here, these seven policies, and making sure that they're, they're tied together for our administrators, our, our students, our parents, to be able to kind of see together. So um, we are, we have scheduled a, a special meeting for the Policy Committee, which will happen next week, um, to put this packet together. So we would be ready anytime after next Monday, um, to have this meeting.
Just, an observation. Um, it seems that, and I could be all wrong, but I'm just gonna throw this out. It seems that when we give the employees what I will call like standard procedures to use in a bullying situation. And they faithfully apply those procedures. The procedures are weighted too much to uh, a positive behavior intervention for the perpetrator lens. Then somehow the ability, you know, at the front lines, on the ground, to synthesize, you're psychologists, you probably understand this way more, somehow the synthesis, the synthesizing of those two goals isn't working well. That, that there is a, a judgment to be had to balance
Right.
the two objectives. And I don't wanna say people don't have good judgment or that, you know, sometimes I thought they're using clerical thinking instead of professional judgment in these assessments. But maybe now there's something in our, not, not in our, our, our the statement of our goals and objectives in the policies, but something operational for how they progress through the situation. That there is a, a a conscious step they have to take that, that incorporates the, the, you know, the victim balance in the thing. And I hope I'm explaining this correctly. People have rules in their head. This is what I'm supposed to do about the situation. Somehow, maybe there needs to be explicit steps in there that require them to look at that end of it as well as that end of it. And it's because we haven't given them those operating procedure steps, those checklist. Did I do this, 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 to assess the situation? I don't know. I'm, I'm struggling to find a way to have us attack, go after this without being negative about the people. Maybe there is something we need to do to give them a, a process. And the process helps them do that synthesis of those two objectives.
Yeah, and we can talk more about that when we bring it forward, but I think our administrative guidelines are where that would really live. Um, and I know that as we've been updating our policy, the administrative team is updating the guidelines each and every time as well. So, and that's really the step-by-step of, you know, if X, then Y kind of thing. But to that end, we are, we are thinking about it and have already, as we've kind of uh, looked ahead to some of these policies, we are already looking at, you know, what are the services that we um, give to people who are the victims of some of these behaviors? And how do we code, how do we codify that so that the victims are not kind of forgotten amongst everything else? But, but they go together, right? I think there's been, we've had some people who have, you know, been, their children have been victimized and, and it's very upsetting for them and they want victims to be prioritized. And what I'm trying to help people understand is that they go hand in hand. You know, we have to, we can't send somebody who's engaging in bullying behavior back into the school without addressing that behavior. And we can't support the victim of the bullying unless we're addressing the behavior of the bullying. So they, they go together and that'll be something that we'll be looking at. And we can do all that together, cause that will be coming for more discussion. We'll have more time for that.
A little bit of a nuance in what I said, I, I'm hoping it's understood. That after you've been bullied, there's the, the healing, the whatever, the services. But if I'm a teacher standing there and there is a bullying action in process, what do I do? You know, um, that, that's, you know.
Yeah.
Like, in the moment, intervention procedures to, okay, all right.
Yeah. We can, yeah, we can look more at it and see what you think. I wanna make sure we're staying. Getting down into the operational stuff, but, but we'll look at it.
But it's de-escalation.
It is, but that.
But I, I get, if we, yeah, I mean, it depends on the nuance and the situation.
Yeah.
Right. And how, how does a teacher or anyone recognize that? You know, what are the, you know, what are the signs that this could be happening?
Do you think that can be addressed through policy?
Well, I don't know if it can be addressed through policy about resourcing.
It's something to think about, but again, you know, I think something that also hasn't happened in tandem was creating policies and also administrative guidelines, right? So we're giving the direction to the, to the school, saying, these are our expectations. You know, these are expectations around bullying. Now, you create administrative guidelines with your teams, who are the professionals and understand, you know, can answer these questions. Like, what are the resources? What are the signs? What tools are, are teachers need to recognize and address bullying, right? So I think, I think, you know, we develop that policy, but also give that charge to the administrative team, which hasn't always happened in tandem. And so we're doing that now. We're having these conversations, you know, where Dr. Means and his team are coming in and having conversations around what they need to see in policy so that they can get the direction to create administrative guidelines. And it seems like Mr. Penion, who's always brilliant.
Like debating when the way in here.
Well, what, what, what happened in twenty thirteen, where we did have an outside investigation of a bullying problem? The investigator came to the conclusion that the positive behavior interventions as applied were not working. But there wasn't anybody to make that decision in the administration. So this building staff kept doing the same thing that wasn't working. And there's nobody to call, okay, it's not working, an alternate strategy is needed, or, or something.
Sure.
And that's fundamentally what happened there. There was nobody to, to call enough on this strategy. Now, what's our alternative?
You have the Mr. Penion.
I think, yeah, A, this conversation points out the importance of having a special meeting to discuss it further. And B, I just wanted to give a concrete example. Policy around bullying is a great example. We have even guidelines that are attached and aligned directly to that policy. And those administrative guidelines also helped us develop a tool for principals to move through that investigation more easily. So we developed an investigation and findings template, template directly aligned to those administrative guidelines, which are aligned to the policy. So you can kind of see how that process unfolds to get to the point of what you're saying, um, more clear guidance and expectations for our principals and our school staff.
Are we okay holding the rest of this to the special meeting? That I will schedule in due order?
We are gonna jump into our policy. Uh, I just wanna um, make a quick point and bring your attention to, oh, I'm sorry, not even yet, cause that's for the second reading. Jenny is going to take it over with.
Policy. So I'm gonna go over three policies. Um, fifty-six oh one. We already had put it on the agenda as a first read today. This is going to be one of the policies that's gonna be in that packet of seven. So you can take a look at it now, see what it is. This is a brand-new policy. It did not exist here in Wauwatosa prior to us creating it. It's basically a policy to guide disciplinary actions. And it is um, very, very specific to Wauwatosa. So I just wanna quote because uh, Mr. or Dr. Zeman from Neola said that this is the best I've ever seen this policy. Um, as far as like a specific policy to guide uh, disciplinary action and who does what in your school system. So again, this will come in front of you in that special meeting. It was already attached for today's reading. Um, so you can take a look at it, but as you can see, it goes through pretty much every role of somebody who steps foot into our building. And what are we asking of them? What is, what are we requiring of all of these different folks um, to make sure that we have a consistent approach to discipline? I know we're gonna talk more about that, so should we just keep on going? Should I just go to the next one? Okay. Um, the next one I'm gonna look at then is twenty-one ten. This is, again, a new policy, did not exist prior to this. This is our educational philosophy. Um, and this is a policy really created to demonstrate our commitment to academic rigor in this district. Um, so it has a number of different expectations that hopefully you will find to be very much in alignment with our strategic plan, with our mission, our vision, and our core values.
One, one thing for this one, as I was reading it, I was thinking about is the question of how do we honor students who are doing excellent work? So I, whether it's honors, honor rolls, or some things, I, I don't, I don't sense that's something that has been the norm. But I'm wondering, I don't know if it fits here. Uh, I don't even know if it's in policy, but something where we can celebrate and call out the students who are doing the work exceptionally. And it could be growth. Like, I, I would love to find ways for us to celebrate even a kid who's not getting straight A's. If a kid's really putting forth the effort, uh, and showing a lot of growth in different ways. Or this may be part of the gifted and talented piece too, around different areas of, of gifts and talents. But I would love to see if it fits here, that to become.
Five point two. Strategic objectives, five point two. Establish criteria for recognizing significant contributions by staff and students for creating, cultivating positive, safe, inclusive, welcoming learning environments in their respective. That's the whole purpose of strategic objectives.
We do have recognitions in schools for multiple level of students, especially at the high schools. Maybe they are stopped, maybe they have stopped.
That work is, I was just answering Mr. Joseph Bangor's question of where is that captured? Within our strategic work that is captured in five points.
Well, I know that this work, this, this is happening in schools. We have recognition programs for a number of different types of students.
Are you hoping to see that, though, in policies, like reflected in policy somewhere that we are committed to that? I mean, it is certainly in our strategic plan, but there isn't really a place right now, I don't think, in policy where that is. Will we indicate that that's something we are gonna hold our administrative team to?
I would allow that to the two of you in your policy committee conversations. I, I as a board member would love to see us put in place something that holds us all accountable to celebrating and having systems in place that celebrate kids. I think the strategic plan will speak to it once. And we can keep it in there or not, but I, I, I know it's a priority right now. I would love to see that a priority.
I love that idea. I mean, and I think it might even fit well in this, and I think it's worth having a conversation at our next policy meeting. Cause, you know, that is our educational philosophy and it's tied directly to our strategic plan that, you know, we talk about these islands of excellence and having like the top performing school, but we also have our schools that are doing other really great things. And student success looks differently for a lot of kids. And I think if we can capture that in here, that we're celebrating, you know, student achievement and that it's gonna look differently. Um, I think that'd be a great place for it.
Sorry, I had to jump in. So policy fifty-five, or fifty-four fifty-one is student recognition. It speaks a little bit to what you're mentioning. So as someone who keeps diving in for answers in policy, found that one. So it'd be good to review.
I do think there's possibly a way we could, we could incorporate it into H, just to like state it very directly to say valuing each student by seeking out identifying nurturing and celebrating each learner's unique strengths and talents.
Yeah, I agree.
Thank you.
That's H, I just add celebrating. Uh, one more, um, for me, there's more than one more. Next policy, thirty-three sixty-two point oh one. This is an existing policy. Um, we didn't really change much about it. This is just the updated Neola version. Um, this is threatening behavior toward staff members. This policy does go along with another one that's in the eight thousand series that we have to review that is about um, reporting. It's a, a mandate to report harassment uh, that is put on our staff. Um, but for now, we wanted to put this one out. We actually, one of the things we had asked about was whether there was any kind of policy that exists in Neola for um, threatening behavior toward, toward board members. And uh, there isn't, which is really kind of surprising. Um, and it's something that kind of went up through the chain of Neola, I don't know, leadership. Um, and it rose to the top and they said, oh, that's interesting that we don't have something like that. Maybe we really should. And so that's something that's gonna be discussed at the Neola kind of highest levels to determine if, um, there should be, if there is need statewide for policy to protect board members from threatening behavior.
All right, that takes me over to our bylaws. Um, I'm not gonna go into depth.
Is, is one forty-three point three, is that a, well, that's a bylaw, is that a bylaw? Okay, okay, thanks, yeah.
So I'll just briefly introduce them. Um, the first is zero one four three. It's the authority of individual board members. Um, that is just an updated policy from Neola. We just took their recommendation. Uh, the next, zero one four three point one, the public expression of board members. Um, again, we just took uh, the Neola's recommendation for that. Um, that takes us over to a new policy, which is um, zero one four three point two. And that is board member information request. So really just just outlines the procedure for board members to request information from the district. It's not something that we, we had in place, but I think it's something that's very important. Go up to the next. Sure.
Didn't we author this or?
This is Neola's. Yep, we did not change anything. This is Neola's um, draft that we accepted.
Okay.
Our recommendation.
I, I like where this is trying to go. I have some Um, the first, and maybe we'll be close by anyone. I am very reluctant to ever give executive authority to the board president. No matter who the president is. It's kind of a constitutional thing. And so on the C, where it says superintendent will discuss with board president the validity, well, I'm fine with the superintendent just deciding on the validity. Um, if this, and then number four, superintendent, um, discuss with the board president the legality, well, I think the superintendent can make that call. He, he, okay, so okay, so, but that's, that's not the most important thing here. The, the second item, the second most important is the access of board members to data downloads so that board members can noodle around and maybe find something or see something.
Where is that?
That, that is the um, the C, uh, C one, A. That's that we could have board members with six sigma skills, with costing skills. If we could give them, sure, if it's easy, give them, give them the data. All right, now, the most important thing, which I think is just really, really huge, is reports can be a cancer on focus. That at the beginning of my board service, oh, board members, well, we, we would like you to bring the board to report on this and report on that. All kind of board members were asked for this. And board administration would just pin down doing all these ad hoc reports. So we don't do that anymore. Now, that said, if there's going to be a report that's worthy of going to the board, shouldn't it be part of our regular report cadence already? And if it's, if, if it's important enough for the board member to ask for it and the board to approve it, for example, if it was a financial-related report, well, shouldn't it be included in Mr. Breitman's? Well, shouldn't it be included in Mr. Brightman's grid that he has to keep us self-disciplined? That whatever we're looking at, it's part of our, our North Star or our mission. That it, it self-disciplines us to stay focused and that similarly so I would say that there'd be a preference or an emphasis to say, okay, when approving this report, is it something, it's more likely to be approved? If it's something that we would think worthy of putting in a regular report cadence to annually monitor on a second, that's true, or it's more likely to be approved? If it's directly related to a matter that's coming before the board? So we don't start having like fragmenting interests from the board, not in any nefarious way or anything, just self-discipline, focus is hard. So I'd just say, if, if we're going to have a report, we really want it to be in furtherance of one of our board focuses. Otherwise we're diluting their time because we're already hearing their search staff all over the place. So that, that'd be why I put it, I would, I would like to see that any report requested by a board member be in furtherance of one of our focus items that the superintendent is actually working on.
So I just wanted to make sure I'm capturing what you're saying.
Yeah.
So your breakdown is kind of that individual board members can request reports or data that might not already be included in something that's been published.
That would be the C1A, and that's pretty harmless. If, if you can say, yeah, give me a, a thumb drive with a, a cost accounting data download. Or give me something on longevity of teachers, which I did and figured out it was actually the first year teachers where we lost the most of. You know, something that's, doesn't take them any time, although there are many executives like that. Okay. I'm fine with that. I'm happy with the C1A. Okay. I'm just saying I support it.
Okay.
Okay. But I think the really big thing is that we as a board require of ourselves that reports be in furtherance of our board declared focus.
This would be kind of like C2. There would be maybe some additional language we would add under C2. That would suggest, because that's the, that's sort of the, the steps you have to take to get additional reports. That would require substantial investment.
Yeah. If we're going to ask them to spend a lot of time, it better be in furtherance of something that we wanted them to do already. And if, if a report that's a big deal is not in furtherance of something that we already asked them to do, then shouldn't that question be put up to the full board, get our annual polls revealed before we approve that report?
I do think too, I mean, I think it gets to the essence of your concern that it has to go through a process. Like we can't just ask the superintendent or anyone on the staff to just provide something with, if it's going to be so labor intensive, that it has to be approved by the board.
But I'm thinking about, we got a lot of the board members and we have, they weren't here tonight. And we have written down here, oh, hello, a checklist on this thought process is that be in furtherance of something we already told them to do.
What if we said?
Because your response is, well, it's already implicit in here. And yes, it is already implicit in here. But the whole point to have these bylaws is that we want to write stuff down so that the next board is.
Right. So it's clear.
Right.
What if we?
You know.
What if we said, so under two, under C2? So there, uh, this is like the third line down. The requests will be reviewed at the next meeting if possible by the board and superintendent to clarify their request and determine in the context of other priorities and in alignment with strategic plan?
Yes. And, and favor will be given to requests that are aligned with strategic plan or something like that, that the superintendent knows. Or we approve some requests, but we don't give many requests for reports actually. So it's not that big of a topic, but I'm only thinking back.
Yeah.
Past where we did have a lot of board members requests.
Well, I mean, I am concerned about what's happening currently and maybe Dr. Means can help us. With what he has seen over the course of a year and a half. And what things did meet the strategic goals in his opinion? And or, you know, I mean, we've had different board presidents, but, um, but I'm interested, Dr. Means, in your reply to this.
I think the, the structure that this by law provides is it provides more structure than what we currently have. I agree with Mr. Meyer. There aren't a lot of requests that come our way from the board. Candidly, I think there's been a lot of requests for data and information from the community, public. And, and balancing that request is something that's going to be ongoing because while we want to balance it, there's also a real big push for transparency in data. And so we're trying to meet that requirement and that request is quick as possible.
But does it really function for you or do you want more, like less ad hoc requests? I should say, less ad hoc requests and more formal or, you know, more board member requests. So.
I think it's always, always better for us to have more formal requests. And, and as stated earlier in this conversation, if we can create a pace and cadence for the, the reports and know when they're going to be requested, that, that would just help us all in balancing the work.
Yeah. The thing is about the communication is I might not know what my colleagues are requesting.
Yeah.
And you're only going to know that, Dr. Means. So I don't, you know, I don't know how to. Now you create that ongoing communication about, I mean, sometimes you do that with the bylaws that you give us. But other times I'm not sure what's all happening.
Exactly. And that's why I think this policy is so important because it will, that won't, that won't really be able to happen anymore unless it's, you know, like what's our demographic data? That's something you can easily pull off the website. You could ask that, that should be something we should be able to get without having a whole report and come to the board. But I know I was one of the people who asked for some of those Underwood numbers. That probably actually rises to the level of needing to come to the board to say, I'm asking for specific numbers around Underwood. Here's my reasoning why. And then not only do we all as a board decide, is that important right now? Is this what we want Dr. Means and his team to spend their time doing? But also making sure that we all get the data when it's out there. So it's not just coming to me, individual board member who asked for it. Cause I'm interested in Underwood, but really making sure it gets out to everybody.
No, and then, but I'd add that, but that if it was important enough to you to ask about for Underwood, that if it's important enough for the board to say yes, it probably is just as important for all of the other buildings so that we're aware. And if we incorporate it into the annual report cadence, that the reporting becomes easier because it's not an ad hoc report. Cause I think I have to do this every year. All right. I better guess, I'm, I'm going to get a system now. I'm going to get a standard report generating program that's going to spit this out. I don't have to like ad hoc it with a spreadsheet and all this kind of stuff. That, that's what I mean, that, that, that we. Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And you're right. There probably need to be systems. Maybe this will help us to identify what we've all been piecemeal asking about. And now we're, again, we're operationalizing it. Oh, I guess everybody wants the numbers split between, you know, you use them in Underwood because they're two different programs or whatever.
Right. What I'm saying is actually hugely respectful of the requests made because, okay, you think it's important. Well, okay. All right. I'm, I'm, I'm embracing it.
Yeah.
What's good, maybe we want to know what's going on at the other schools before we have a problem. So we see it. And let's make it part of our regular, our bulk of reports or whatever. I don't know. Okay.
Well, I, I also asked for the Underwood numbers FYI. And so I'm just wondering if we should put in some kind of a board mechanism on our agenda to be able to share what information we're asking about. Maybe this is a board agenda, you know, so we're all on the same page without. You have to be careful that we're not getting into substance on, you know, on some topics.
My, my, my question often when we get, the thing that I've been concerned about is the, I understand why the community wants some information and every time the team is not focused on solving the problem, it, it's distracting them. So it's kind of the, the, when, when we've got to do the work. And then when's the moment where they can collect the data and it, and it may be slower than we want. And I, what I, what I, I think we've all observed this, the data systems in place and the dashboards that we are, we are privy to at this point and the reports that we have and the cadence that we're having them look really different than they did to your space.
Now, the flip side of what I said about a standard report cadence, speaking from my professional past, the classic IT inefficiency is a regular report that nobody looks at. And people are busting their, their, their tails to get this report done every year. And analysts come along like, well, when's the last, it would be like, well, nobody's actually read the report in eight years. You know, so I mean, that actually happens, right? So if we're going to have regular reports, we should annually review to what, see whether they're, they're actually being used. If we're not, then we cut them out.
Yeah. I'm going to keep us moving along if that's okay. Or is this one?
I think we got the feedback.
Okay. Now come back for a second.
I'm not stuck on specific words, just so you consider it. And if you like it, you do. If you don't, you don't. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you for the feedback.
I'm sorry. Uh, I know we already talked about this, but 3362.01. Could we bring that back in the, in the discipline? In the discipline policy grouping too, please, as I think it's relevant.
The special meeting?
Yes, in the special meeting. And then the reporting one, the 845201, right? Threats of violence.
I think that it can go away and then. I am just keeping this back up to see. Sorry, I just thought of that and I shouldn't set it. No, you're right. You're right. That should probably be in that. So 3362.01 and 8462.01. Now policies now. 8462.01. It's, it's, um, I think it's actually said in here. So that's threats of violence. So it says this, this is in 3362.01. This policy should be read consistently and in conjunction with school safety and mandatory reporting of threats of violence. And policy 8462.01. It's our, it says that staff have to report if they've been threatened basically is what, I mean, we didn't look at it in detail, but that's essentially what it says. You know what? We might, this might be the Neola. I probably hold the. Okay.
Sure.
Dr. Zemmen will help us.
That just takes us to our last two bylaws, which is 0144.3, conflict of interest. And that is just accepted Neola's model. Um, it is based on state statute, um, as well as the next, which is in divination, um, 0144.4. Again, you know, accepted the model, which is, um, which is driven by state statute. That concludes our first reads.
Let's move quickly into second reads.
Um, I just have one, one caveat for the second reads, um, 0112. We had some community feedback by a number of people who wanted to make sure for our purpose that we had inclusive language. So legally, um, our transition students, 18 to 21 are captured under 12th grade because they are not given a diploma until they complete their transition program. While that is the DPI standard, um, you know, we did recognize that it was not inclusive language. So we updated that policy. Just to reflect that we do service students, uh, both in the early childhood program and in the 18 to 21, uh, for transition services. So just moving forward, um, you know, honestly, we, I had looked back at a lot of policy and we had, hadn't had any language around transition students. I looked at some neighboring districts who have transition programs and they did not have inclusive language about transition students. So again, like just making sure that we honor, you know, our commitment to being inclusive and using this language to move forward. Just to recognize that those are the students that we serve. So that's the only caveat I have or any change that we made for second readings. Uh, the rest are the same as, as presented for first reading. I don't think there were any major like things that were brought up last week or three weeks ago that we needed to update.
Any more questions or comments?
The, uh, the issues resolution policy, is that coming sometime?
That one has not been on our to do list next. Are you feeling like that one needs to be?
Well, I, yeah, I mean, a lot of these are, you know, related to board, you know, board conduct and things like that. And I guess my point is what is the guidance on board members accessing legal district, you know, district council and how will we, how will we have a policy for resolving issues for public officials in our district?
That's 93.
9130.
9130.
So that'll be coming. Okay.
Yeah, we can, I'll add it to my list of important policies.
9130 though is a, it must be a question about access and use of legal counsel. That's a separate topic than 9130. There's a lot of reasons to access counsel that have nothing to do with a complaint.
Right. So I guess that's, yeah, this is kind of what I'm asking is in our, do we need a new policy in our bylaws about that particular subject?
We can ask during our policy meeting. It certainly is something that we've addressed yet, but we can certainly ask Dr. Zemmen where that would fall.
There is a, um, Wisconsin Bar Journal article written by, I believe Shannon Lewis, about appropriate use of counsel by boards. For example, the the, uh, legal counsel for the board is not personal counsel for the board president. And how the board president navigates that is, it matters a lot. That legal counsel, you know, so to be candid, we've made mistakes in that regard over the past few years and it's, it's had an adverse impact on things. So I do think that very specifically needs to be looked at in the interest of that. And it wasn't so important when we had more lawyers on the board. And when it was not uncommon to have a lawyer as board president, because lawyers are trained to understand those things. And laypeople just aren't. So you'll get, and that's just how, you know, so it kind of needs to be codified. If I wasn't on the board, you'd have no lawyers on the board. And there would be nobody here with that kind of like professional framework in their head to understand how to navigate those things.
Yeah, I'm happy to bring it to Dr. Zemmen. Um, we have a place in our agenda where we can kind of talk about these things. So I'm happy to bring it to the next meeting.
Yeah, I gotta think Neola must have something.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure.
Yeah, they've got everything, right? So, okay.
Thank you.
Any community comments on that? Anything online?
Shoot, sorry, I was muted. There is one hand raised. Deb Falk-Pallick, you have the microphone. Please state your name and address.
Hi, thank you, Deb Falk-Pallick. Um, regarding bylaw 0112, the purpose of the school district, I was the community member who came to the board mem, meeting to suggest that the purpose of the school district should be expanded to include our early childhood three-year-olds and our 18 to 21-year-olds. But I did ask, and just to, to clarify something, Jessica, that you had mentioned. There is no legal standard stating that 19, 18 to 21-year-olds are considered 12th graders. I did ask that of the Neola representative to cite the legal citation and there isn't anything. So, um, it's not, we're not legally bound to do that, but I'm happy after advocacy with, um, community members that we were able That we were able to get language in there that our school district does exist to serve more than just JK through twelve, but. Three-year-olds to twenty-one, so thank you.
Great example of community advocacy and the board, uh, being responsible.
There are none more.
Thank you, Jenny, um, Ms. Lawrence, please call them.
I can have the motion, I see. You're a numbers guy.
Uh, yeah. It is recommended that the school board approve the revisions or adopt new policies. Zero-one-zero-zero, zero-one-one-one, zero-one-one-two, zero-one-one-three, zero-one-one-four, zero-one-one-five, zero-one-two-one, zero-one-two-two, zero-one-two-three. Zero-one-three-one-point-one, zero-one-three-two-point-one, zero-one-three-two-point-two, zero-one-three-three, zero-one-four-one, zero-one-four-one-point-one. Zero-one-four-two-point-one, zero-one-four-two-point-two, zero-one-four-two-point-three, zero-one-four-two-point-four. Zero-one-four-two-point-five, zero-one-four-two-point-six, zero-one-four-two-point-seven. Nice move. Mr. Phillips, I believe you missed the third one, can you just go back? It's right after the second one.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Trying to save you, man, okay, thank you all for noting, I, I, we didn't even have a motion on yet. Please call the roles.
Ms. Neufeld? Yes. Ms. Fraley?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Jessa Binger?
Yes.
Dr. Hoy?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
And that takes us up to public comment and any non-agenda items to close us out. We, do we have any in the room? We have none in the room? Do we have any online?
Yes, we do, Julie Alexander, you have the microphone, please state your name and address.
My name's Julie Alexander, seventy-two twenty-four West State Street, Unit one A. As an Apple of Wauwautosa, five-three-two-one-three. One comment, just a comment, uh, basically, I thought the presentation on academic performance was very. Very good, um, tonight, uh, the one thing that I was wondering is we've got all these pods of. Of people that are doing different presentations about different things that would be sort of interesting to see. If there'd be a way that. The people that are on this team could coordinate with the people that are. Dealing with special ed and disabilities, because I think there might be some real, uh, wins that we could. Bring to our students. If we'd have a lot of creative minds coming together in terms of helping them achieve financial. I, I should, I, um, excellence in their schooling, thank you.
Thank you. Deb Falk-Palick. You have the microphone, please state your name and address.
Hi, it's Deb Falk-Palick, um, Jenny, you were right, if, if all board members look at the agenda for tonight. Under academic performance, it does call for public comment on strategical one items. So unfortunately, I know that there were people online who wanted to speak to this, so I don't know why. Um, that wasn't called for at all, so I'm asking if, um. You know, I know, Eric, it can be hard to run the meeting and pay attention to everything, but if everybody else can also help. So that if there are opportunities for public comment and it's looked over by the, the, um, chair of the, the committee or the board. That somebody else can really point that out, so we don't lose opportunity for the public to participate. And I'm assuming that maybe that whole team has left the room already, okay, thank you. So I guess, uh, Dr. Means, um, back when there, thank you for tilting the camera. Back when, all right, I'm getting dizzy, um, okay, back when. You had done a presentation to the community with the community about the strategic plan, there was quite a bit of advocacy. And this happened again tonight when the academic performance, um, team was on. That they missed citing, it's missed in written language, it's missed in verbal language and presentation. Those children who take the DLM, so we have the Wisconsin Forward, we've mentioned the ACT, we mentioned STAR. Where we, we continue to not mention that, so if you remember, we kind of had a push a little bit to say. Help, help get this group of children in there to be following them. And, um, uh, Wise Dash, they, uh, DPI just released the DLM information, so that's on there. But if you can please have your team ensure that this group is being looked at as well. Um, that we're not being dismissive, dismissive of them. Because otherwise we can't say we're really looking at the performance of all students. And I think when we talk about inclusion and belonging and a sense of belonging. There sure would be a sense of belonging if for the one thousand twenty-four families who have students with IEPs this school year. If special ed was represented at that table with, um, the academic performance team. And they talked a lot tonight about their, um, helpers that are coordinators, special ed has four coordinators. But it really would be representative and send a strong message if we saw special ed there, so we wouldn't have to. Be raising these, these concerns and issues, but it could be worked on. So I'm asking, um, who I could follow up with, if it's been done already, that we're starting to track in milestones, the DLM students too. That something's been come, figured out and come up to be able to track their performance measures as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dr. Neufeld. Rice.
Uh, it is ten oh one PM, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Let's go the room.
Ms. Neufeld? Yes, Ms. Fraley?
You're on mute. You're on mute.
Yes, sorry, I keep saying yes, it's not stick, is, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Mr. Meyer?
Yes.
Dr. Jessa Binger?
Yes.
Dr. Hoy?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Ms. Willis?
Yes.
Ms. Fraley, you are not allowed to be, uh, online again, I'm sorry. You all have a wonderful evening.